If you'd get your seats, please. If people will get a seat, please. What's that for? Okay. With your sign, please be respectful with the sign if it's in here because some people feel threatened by that. So please be respectful of that. You know, I mean, anything, anything can be a club. I can't even, come on, you know, I can't even read it from here, so, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to tell you, we're going to have a civil meeting and I understand that people are upset on some things, but we're going to be respectful in this building and I'm sorry, we'll be respectful of you and we ask that you be respectful of us or please leave and that, we're all here and, you know, so we can do this and we can do it right. And I'm just sorry, there are some people that felt that way and that's fine. I'm just telling you to be careful, to be respectful of others. That's all we're asking anybody to do in here, so let's please do that, okay? And now if we, in going, if we can have the clerk call the roll, please.
Counselor Oropeza.
Here.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Present.
Counselor Arnold. Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Cabin.
Here.
Counselor Chapel.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Maruho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, if we will, we have a quorum, if we will rise and have the pledge by Counselor Halverson and the prayer by Councilman Oropeza, if you would, please. Oh, no prayer? Okay, do I have Councilman Maruho, if you'd please do the prayer?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glory and honor, Father. We ask you to guide us, determine our footsteps today, Father God. I ask you to protect our police officers, our firemen, our first responders, Father God. We give you all the glory and honor, Father God, that you give us wisdom in the decisions we make. We give you all the glory and honor, in your name we pray, amen.
Okay, now we have item one, approval of the agenda, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the agenda with the following changes. Move item forty-three before public participation. Move item forty-four to be heard before item two and move item forty-five to the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Counselor Cabin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Oropeza.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, for the record, Counselor Moore arrived at six oh four. Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Cabin. Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay. Now we will go to, by, the agenda has been approved. We'll go to item forty-three, excuse me. Item forty-four. Item forty-four. That's the budget. Two sixty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we approve the adoption of resolution twenty-four dash forty-five approving budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2025.
We'll get there.
Okay, we'll start all over again. I move that we approve resolution twenty-four dash forty-five with the adoption of the resolution twenty-four forty-five approving a budget adjustment for the fiscal year with the following changes. Remove the human resource safety line item for eight hundred and five thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-one dollars in safety training. Remove transit in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the small bus price increase. Remove from the wastewater line item for sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents for the backup generator and adding to the wastewater, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for maintenance and repair for equipment.
We have a motion by Councilman, excuse me, this was by Councilman Hildebrand to to approve item forty-four, pardon, as amended. We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand.
Second.
Second by.
Whoa, 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 point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Counselor Corn.
I mean, this was an item that was in Finance Committee. I need to move the adoption and then we take up amendments, don't do it all at once.
Counselor Corn. Counselor Corn, can you please speak into your mic?
Okay, I'll do it. This came through Finance Committee, I'm the chairman of Finance Committee.
He can't hear you.
Well, I got too many people telling me what to do. So, this, this came through Finance. It's got my name on the, on the proposal, as chairman of the committee, I need to move the adoption. Then if you want to amend it, then we can go into discussion on amendments. That's the procedure we've been following since here, since I've been here and that's the way it needs to go. And besides that, I'm about four of his amendments behind here.
Okay, Counselor Hildebrand, if you'll.
Ms. Mayor, I move to remove my motion.
Thank you, okay, Counselor Corn, if you would make a motion on item number forty-four for the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of resolution forty.
Excuse me, Counselor Corn, Counselor Halverson, do you accept that motion? To remove.
Yes, I accept that motion.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Corn.
Are we, we good to go now?
Yep.
Okay, resolution twenty-four forty-four, forty-five, excuse me, is a resolution approving budget adjustment for the, for the fiscal year twenty-five, which is the current fiscal year. Total amount requested is five million, five million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, sixty-four dollars and sixty-three, seventy-three cents.
We have a motion by Counselor Corn to, for resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five, do we have a second?
Second.
That Counselor Maruho have a motion on Counselor Corn, second by Counselor Maruho, is there any discussion? Yes, we have, so in this amendments would be in order at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hildebrand.
I would like to adopt the following amendment to resolution twenty-four dash forty-five, which is on the human resources safety for eight hundred and five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, remove that item. Transit for thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the small bus price increase, remove that item. For the wastewater plant for sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents for the backup generator, remove that item. And I would like to add for the wastewater department, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their maintenance and repair equipment budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Hildebrand.
Second.
For the amendment, it's seconded by Counsel Arnold, second by Counsel Arnold. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Counselor Corn.
I guess I'm supposed to punch a button up here, but I got behind. So, to the proposer, how much does this equate to that you're taking out and adding back?
Madam, if we have the financial detail.
Plus the sixteen is.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. So the amended amount would be four million, seven oh four, six twenty-eight, seventy-six for expenses and revenue would be three eighty-one, five sixty-one, seventy.
Repeat that again, please.
Three eighty-one, five sixty-one, seventy for revenue and expenses in the amount of four million, seven hundred and four thousand, six twenty-eight, seventy-six.
Thank you. Okay.
And Counselor Man Oropeza, did you have?
Not anymore.
Not anymore? Okay, thank you. Any further comments?
Hold on to the amendment and then we'll have a chance to debate, correct?
We're on the amendment, yes.
Okay.
Would you, anyone care to comment or, we have the amendment here. Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing none, we are, we have an amended bill and we're back on the bill as amended. Is there any discussion, Counselor Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just general comments. This is out of the approved budget document that we've got. When we approved this budget on general fund, a lot of this is general fund. Haven't had a chance to look at it. A lot of this stuff was stuff that was eliminated or was not considered, I shouldn't say eliminated, was not considered during this last budget cycle. But in any event, we started the budget with eight hundred, eight million, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. It's going to have to come out of the cash balance we have, that's already been calculated. Leaving us a cash balance and keep in mind, we're just a second month and a couple of weeks into the fiscal year and you'll get this cash balance dropped to a minus, so we'll have no accounted for, unaccounted for. We'll have a deficit that's not accounted for, is that right? We don't have, we don't have the money. Huh? I'm sorry, Jenny.
Not in general fund.
So we're going to have to do further adjustments to, to balance our books. And keep in mind, we're two months into the fiscal year. Two months, that means we got ten more to go, minus a week or two, depending on how you look at it. So just be very careful about this vote and I'm telling you, there's some of this stuff that we've got some rent figure in here, where is it? For a hundred and eighty-one thousand plus, we're occupying the building, we didn't even put the rent payments in the budget. So a lot of this stuff needs to go. We were trying, I was trying to get the committee to go through this line by line during our meeting, Mr. Mayor, and nobody wanted to be bothered, I guess, so it was a rather lengthy meeting. But we went long ways through there and the, the money that you're taking out of the training is another area that we're going to have to figure out a way or shut down our, our training program. And so this is a, this is just a snap decision that's going to have to be revisited. So don't think this is one and done. All that.
Thank you, Counselor Corn, any further comments? Counselor Man Oropeza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'm, I'm just curious of, of the, the amendment. Why are we removing and adding, is there a specific reason why we're removing three items off of the list and then adding an additional one? What, what is the reasoning behind it?
Counselor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Counselor Oropeza, at the Finance Committee meeting, it was requested by staff to remove those items, the three items, and also was requested by staff to increase the wastewater to the, because right now their wastewater maintenance and repair budget, they've already spent it for the year. And they said that they needed an increase. Of course wastewater is different from the fact that they've got their own enterprise fund and it will not affect the general fund with an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've asked for. And the other items were just what was asked by, by staff to make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any further comments? Seeing none of, on the amendment, if the clerk would call the roll, they're on the bill. Let's see, pardon? On the amendment.
Counselor Oropeza.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, we have passed, the motion to amend resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five has passed, so we are back on item forty-four, which is resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five. So is there any further discussion or questions on resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five approving the budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
As amended.
As amended. Okay. Okay, seeing none, if the clerk on a motion by Counselor Corn, seconded by Counselor Maruho, the clerk will call the roll on resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five, budget adjustments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Madam, call the roll, please.
Counselor Oropeza.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
So we, we have approved resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five approving the budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Okay. So number two, we go to the.
Item forty-four, is it not?
The consent agenda.
You've already done the consent agenda. Okay, item forty-three. And that.
We're on item two, the approval of the consent agenda.
We already did, we, oh, we didn't. Well, okay, next we have item two on the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. So for item two, Counselor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Yes.
For the meeting for tonight is September twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Okay, okay. So, all right, so we have a motion by Counsel, Counsel Hildebrand seconded by Counsel Chapel. or seconded by Council Chapel, to approve the, uh, consent agenda as amended, uh, which also moved item forty five to the consent agenda. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So that's where we are, a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda as amended. On Councilman, is there any discussion? Council Arnold.
I just wanted to clarify, what were the amendments to that consent agenda? Just the forty five? That's the, the only addition?
Forty five was the only addition.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we, if we do this, it, on item three is a lease agreement with the Historical Society. And they sent, they laid it on our desk, a letter just before this meeting. I don't seem to be able to find it right now, asking us to, pardon? Approval of the rental agreement.
Okay, thank you. There was an item placed on our desk, uh, desk about that.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, respectfully, the letter that was sent was from the Historical Foundation, not Southeast New Mexico Historical Society. And they have no governing power over the decisions of the society.
Good to know.
Okay, thank you.
So that being the case, they would not have standing, uh, to be considered in this right now. Okay, any further comments? Councilman Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand that they don't have standing as far as, uh, changing the, the, uh, agenda item. But do they not have a right to address an issue? Even if it's on the agenda, uh, on the consent agenda?
I don't, uh, I did not see that name on the list of people who had, I, I could have missed it, there's quite a few people, but I did not see it, that name on the list of agenda for people who wish to speak.
That, that is correct. I don't believe anybody from their group is here to, and signed up wish, wishing to speak on that. Uh, I do have members of the Historical Society that are here that can address that in greater detail, if you wish.
Councilman, or?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry, a procedural note. So this is on the consent agenda. So if a counselor would like it off the consent agenda, uh, they should ju, that, they should move that and that would automatically be removed. Otherwise, we should hear the consent agenda first and then proceed with the agenda as it was already approved.
Okay, to Council Lady Arnold.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just ready if I need to be, sorry.
Oh, okay. All right. Is there anyone who would care to remove this from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Then we will, we will proceed.
Thank you.
All right. So, yeah. So, uh, the council, if you would, the clerk could call the roll to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, who was the second on this item? Thank you, Mr. Chapel.
Counselor Chapel.
Thank you. Councilor Oropesa?
Yes.
Councilor Hildenbrand?
Aye.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Cabin?
Yes.
Councilor Chapel?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
And Councilor Maruho?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, so we're back to item, uh, on a, on a motion, the agenda has been approved by a vote of ten and affirmative, none in the negative. Okay. Okay, so we've got to item forty three. Okay, next we have for, uh, public participation to speak on, uh, on items on the agenda. Uh, for one thing, uh, I would just like, um, for items on the agenda, public, so you'll have an opportunity to speak. Please, uh, limit yourself to three minutes and then, uh, if it's been covered, if you can help us, because there's a number of people here. I would, uh, like to just comment on item, uh, forty three, and that's the water issue. There are, if you, we have been working on the water issue and there were, uh, there's some consents that where we are is on, as far as the city goes, last year, we were four point seven million dollars in the hole in, uh, our water rates. And meaning that they did not cover the cost of the repairs and running your water system. And one of the things that happened when that happens, we have to, there are four enter, enterprise funds, water, wastewater, solid waste, and cemetery. And, and, and the airport, and when those, uh, when those funds, uh, are short, then that comes from other funds, have to be made up by the council, which come from police and fire and administration. And, and out of the general fund, and that's, that's how, uh, this, these enterprise funds work. They pay for all the blue collar workers and the ones to keep the necessary items running as far as basics for the city of Roswell. Uh, there was not a rate increase since two thousand, and I believe it was thirteen. And we, and so where we were, the water, uh, the head of the water department, when we looked at that, they looked at different ways to do water. We were on a, a fixed base rate. And, and one of the things that, in a number of areas in the, in the country, they use a rate, plus they have a sliding scale for going up to promote wa, water conservation. And that was, I think, uh, that was adopted, I think that, uh, a lot of us didn't understand. It would, it would do, uh, the massive increase that it did, uh, from the structures. So I believe that right now, the way it is right now, uh, the council has considered and don't want to change it to that, uh, fee structure like they use in other parts of the country. I would tell you, when you look at your water rates right now, it takes a thirty percent increase to, uh, to br, now wait, no, 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 now listen. Just a minute, can you just listen, please? I've been respectful, I'll be respectful, I ask the same of you. It takes to pay the four, four point seven million dollars of what we were short in last year's budget. So, just a minute, please. Just hear me out, please. You know, would you, can you just hold off, please? Please be respectful. I, you know, I'm just saying that that's what it takes to make this water system, uh, whole. Where you spend, what you spend pays for it. Now, if you look, uh, one of the problems that we have in this, in this city is that our infrastructure is extremely aged. And when you look at that, between nineteen, uh, forty and nineteen eighty, when we put most of our water in, water systems in, the pipes are extremely old. Be, the majority of our pipe, forty-five percent of the pipe that we have in the ground, is just like this ca, uh, cast iron or ductile iron pipe right down here. And this was put in, most of it was put in, in nineteen forty to forty-five. And that has exceeded its useful life. Uh, when you look at that, uh, that pipe is eighty years old and it was never designed to last that long. If you look at the water mains that broke right here, we had one bro, broke on, uh, on, uh, Montana, three houses north of, uh, uh, college. And then one, the next, and that, that was on Sunday, on Monday, uh, a house, one house, or just past the, uh, battered spouses shelter or whatever, battered person's shelter. One house passed that on Monday morning, another one broke there. This pipe, this, if you look at this pipe, I had them cut it out and bring it in here so you can look at it. This pipe is made, it's a half inch thick and the, a half inch, so that's, you know, uh, the, right now, the, in the part where this broke, the pipe has been eaten by corrosion. And it's less, it's six hundredths of an inch thick. Now, we have, uh, a hundred and sixty miles of that pipe in Roswell that has to be replaced. And I don't know how else we do it, but we, if you look at that, I think the, the council will discuss and decide what we have to do. But we have to do something to, can, now please, you know, if you want to be ejected, we'll have to do that. I'm not, I'm just saying, listen us out and not interrupt, please. And I'm just saying that when we, we have to figure out how to begin to replace that pipe. And it's, it's extremely difficult. It's, a lot of this is eight, ten inch, twelve inch pipe. So it's extremely expensive. And we have, uh, you know, we haven't done anything like this, uh. And I, I just want you to know that this is where we are. When you look about our, our pipe, uh, we have about twenty-two percent of our pipe is PVC. And everything else is either concrete asbestos or, uh, or other materials. And, and it's, it's, it's all getting extremely old. And we have to begin, we have to have a plan to do it some, in some way. I have been in contact with the, uh, about other ways to fund this, uh, the construction. If we can pass a grocery receipts tax to fund it, so it's not all on, uh, the water people. Or that's what we're looking at and to see about grants. We've had two major, uh, one of the things we have is in two thousand and, uh, I believe it was eleven, we had, there are, we have two tanks outside on Six Mile Hill that hold fifteen million gallons of water. That surprises, that does most of the town. Those tanks have been leaving, leaking since two thousand and eleven and never been fixed. And those are all things that have to be done. The councils in the past did not choose to fix those items. We have, we are in dire straits on fixing the infrastructure that we have in this community. And I can't tell you enough, uh, we didn't, uh, there's only a couple of people on this council that were here when they voted on that stuff. So it's really, this is a problem that is there, that has to be addressed and fixed some way. And if you wake up and you don't have water, then you have a problem. And we, water is one of those basic necessities that you have to have, water, sanitation. Those are all things that we have to have and it has to work. So if you would like to look at this, you can look at this line down here that broke here. You can look, there's probably three inches of corrosion on the outside of this cast iron pipe. And you look at that and you can see where it's, uh, that's all solidified and we have to do something. Where's the, most of this pipe is in the older parts of town? Which means that's when, if we don't fix it, that's, uh, where a majority of our people live with, uh, lower incomes. And I just want to tell you, that's why we have to figure out a way to do this. And it's gonna take all of us working together to come up with a solution for this. But if we don't have, if we don't get the water tanks fixed, we applied to the state for a water grant, and they cut us back instead of giving us a, a, a larger match. A lot of times they'll give you a grant, and if your water rates are more in line with the state average, then you'll get a better grant. Our, our rates and our grant for that was about forty percent, forty-five percent. And so that's, that's where we are. And, uh, if you look at our rates and they'll, before anybody decides all this stuff, I think you'll be able to see that we're, excuse me, please, if you'd like to leave, leave. But we're all, we're all not gonna interrupt. And so that's exactly, uh, where we are and it has to come to a way to fix it. With our, in a lot of our water situations, why we have not gone to the, uh, progressive rate, is we're one of the lucky places that has a replace, rechargeable basin from where we get our water. So a lot of the water, if we can sell it to somebody else, the more water we can sell to other, uh, larger yards or whatever, pays for, to subsidize the rest of the water that we have, uh, that we, that we pump here. Because it's, it's cheaper for us to sell it at that higher, at the, at that rate than anything else. So that's kind of, that's where we are and, uh, I, I, you're welcome to look at all these pipes. You can actually, if you play with them, you can pick and see where this pipe blew out and how it blew out. But the, the wall thickness is, is, uh, extremely short. Okay? All right, now, Council, uh, Councilor Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I think I want to actually quickly start by saying, um, how much, how grateful I am to Mayor Protim, Hildenbrand, and the city admin that got together. I don't know, um, if anyone has had a chance to actually read the ordinance that's being proposed tonight. Because it actually is a, a very solid solution to trying to balance, um, raising the funds to fix our infrastructure while not gouging our citizens. So, um, actually, you should read it, please. Because, no, but you have to actually, if you want to come to a meeting, it kind of helps if you know that we provided a solution. There is a solution that we're gonna propose tonight. So you may want to actually listen to what the city admin presents as our solution. So I just wanted to let you know, there is a solution being presented.
Thank you, Councilor Arnold. Councilor Moore?
Um, I, I want to, um, tell everybody that we all are in the same situation. We all, all of our bills went up. Now I do, don't, I didn't say nothing when you was talking. Now, there is a solution, that there's something we have to work out together. Was there a mistake in the way this one was rolled out or a not misunderstanding of the way this, 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 this increase was rolled out? Yes. There's no, 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 no other way to look at it. The way it was rolled out this time of the year, rolled out an increase in the hottest month of the year, so that didn't help either. So I just want you guys to, to be patient. We are trying to work through this. We, uh, the resolution, uh, that, that is on the floor this evening for us to discuss is a partial solution. Is it the complete solution? Probably not. But I just want you guys to be patient and to understand, tonight is just an, just a, this discussion is just to advertise for a public hearing, for there should be an opportunity for more discussion. And we can discuss without fussing. We can discuss without cussing. We can have those information without being disrespectful. You are, you are allowed to sign up to speak and you're gonna get that opportunity. But I just want you guys to be fair to us sitting up here, uh, that the way that it came across wasn't the way that we understood it to be either. So I just want y'all to, just to be patient as we work through this. And the quicker we get this resolution or a resolution, And the quicker we get this resolution or a resolution on the books, the quicker the bills can get fixed. The longer we sit here and discuss and argue about what already happened, the longer it's going to take for those bills to get fixed. And that's, 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 that's just the way it is. And so when the manager, city manager comes and discusses or whoever's discussing this, you guys just understand that and be patient and don't, don't be disrespectful, don't be rude. We, we all have an opinion, we all, none of us are happy. None of us are happy. Otherwise you wouldn't be here because it'd be nice to see some of this many people out when other things are going on. But as I told the manager, when it affects you, that's when you come out. And so this is affecting everybody, so it's good to see everybody out. When it affects you, that's when you say something. And so I'm glad to see all of you out with this opportunity to, to speak and, uh, thank y'all for coming out and hopefully some, a good solution can be had this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Uh, Councilor Halverson.
First, I do want to apologize on behalf of the council, what, how this happened was not the way we had planned it to happen. So we are sorry, we, we did not want this to happen to our citizens in Roswell. But here's our deal is, this can has been kicked down the road for decades. We just happen to be the council that actually wants to step up and not pass this on every year to another council. We're trying to fix the problem. As he said, our pipes, they're in bad situation. And I see on YouTube, people commenting, why are you, we making you suffer? We're not trying to make you suffer. It's just if we don't fix the problem, you will not have water. Because that's just the way it is, the pipes are going to break and we won't have money to fix it. The financial situation...
Would you like to leave?
So that, we are a fairly new council. We're, we had nothing to do with this being kicked down the road for years and years and decades, actually decades. The, the, the tanks leaking, like, they were leaking well before we were in office. I'll let Mr. Corn address the fact, you know, how the, uh, the enterprise funds, money was taken out of those and that the financial situation, as you said, with the city is a dire situation. Um, somebody mentioned on YouTube, the aquatic center, they didn't have a choice in that either, neither did we. And that's going to affect us being able to increase the grocery receipts tax to cover this. We also cannot get funding from the state or the government because we don't raise enough for our rates, as the mayor said, so they won't give us funding because our rates weren't high enough. So there's a lot of issues that we're trying to fix, we're not trying to make you suffer, we're just trying to make sure you actually have water to use in your home or business.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you, Councilor, uh, Halverson. Councilor McCorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As long as we're getting this out, I hope everybody is, is trying to learn about this problem we're facing. Mr. Mayor, Roswell has three hundred and fifty miles of pipe in the ground. If you're driving your car, that's from here to Albuquerque and somewhere in the Von area. Three hundred and fifty miles. Forty-two of which we've earned, has already been deemed by inspectors to be in critical need of repair. That's not the blowout that you see, that's another set of pipes. The cost needed for those repairs, and actually it's a replacement project because the pipe, we've got pipe in this community that is actually seeping through the pipe. I've seen pictures of repair work that was done by the, by the, our city folks, that the water is actually, when you expose it, it's actually sweating in the ground. So the cost for this, just this forty-two miles, and I have no idea how much we really got, because it's going to be more than that, was thirty-two million dollars. Eight million dollars, we thought we would need to repair the city water tanks, that's already done, it's a forty-five, fifty-five split, grant forty-five, fifty-five percent loan. So we got to pay that fifty-five back, five point five. Um, and it's been delayed for the last thirteen years. Thirteen years. I thought it was twenty-eleven, Mr. Mayor, like you did. I was corrected the other day, says, no, it was in twenty-twelve, so whatever. We also, and I know people are upset about this, is the outstanding utility bills. Nine, uh, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The thing is, ladies and gentlemen, if we don't have this revenue in the house, we can't fix anything. We just can't. So we're not crediting anybody for past water debt because that's against the state constitution. We cannot give individuals or businesses money out of the city coffers. There's also eighteen point two million dollars for the smart meters. And the current, this year's budget, because I've got it right here in front of me, we still owe fourteen, over fourteen million dollars on the principal, four million dollars on the, on the interest that's due, we're still at eighteen million dollars. This was done, I looked up the ordinance the other day, it was signed by Mayor Kentai. This did nothing, did zero for enhancement or replacement of our, anything in our water or wastewater problems. We've got, uh, two loans, four point, uh, nine point four million has been committed to the renovation improvement at the wastewater treatment facility. That's to maintain the guidelines of the EPA. Those proj, that project's been going on for three years, where's Lorenzo? Three years, it's still not complete, but it should be complete this fiscal year. So we're going to, we're going to have to start making payments on that. Costs of pipes, parts, valves, meter boxes, meters and other hardware has increased by a hundred and twenty percent. Eight point seven million was transferred from the water fund to the general fund to recover administrative costs during the previous decade. That's again, during Mayor Kentai's term. Solid, solid waste, and Mr. Mayor, if you think I ought to wait on solid waste, I can do that, but I can go ahead and talk about it. Uh, solid waste is, has an unlined cell. It was built back when the airbase was here. And it doesn't have a liner as required by today's EPA standards. We don't have a clue what's in that cell. With the airbase here, no telling what they brought us. We didn't check anything, we just opened the, we just told them to drive through and dump it, told them where to dump it. I don't want, I would be really concerned if we tried to open that pit and open up any potential contamination. Because I know, you all need to know, that that sucker is full of all sorts of asbestos. Regardless if they got anything else in there. So we're having to build monitor wells, have been installed, and one of them spiked the other day, we're going to have to look at other methods to try to keep that contained. Of course, all the equipment they use has to be replaced on a regular cycle. Mr. Mayor, if you'd help me out.
Yep. Ma'am, I'm sorry. We can, we'll be glad to work with you. If you have to leave, we, you, we can arrange and you can leave your bill and we'll have someone get ahold of you. But, uh, but we have to run the meeting according to the rules and I'm sorry, but I'm... Yeah, you will, you will get that as soon as we explain, we get through explaining, the council will explain this and then you will get your chance. Councilor McCorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was six point, six point, six point nine million of water, of, of funds that were moved from the solid waste enterprise fund and transferred to the general fund over the last decade. Um, due to decades, 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 ten years of deferred maintenance, funds were never allocated to systematically address the city's declining critical infrastructure. We're at a point we can no longer ignore these needs. We must allocate money to address the critical infrastructure now. We must implant an annual review to ensure that our cost provide water, wastewater and solid waste service in order to ensure customers, they are not only charged to the cost to provide water, wastewater and solid waste disposal services. The city's water, wastewater, solid waste enterprise funds demand enhanced accountability. We agree. By maintaining transparent fund management or water, wastewater and solid waste services, we'll provide full disclosure of what we're paying for and how your money's going to be So, and if you bothered to look at the back of your new bill, instead of just tearing off the bottom portion and sticking it in the mail and complaining about the high, high charges, it's got an explanation of how the money's intended to be used. Now, Mr. Mayor, there's been a lot of people ask me, well, what did all that money on the back of your bill? On the left, left-hand side, it gives you a breakdown of all the different expenses. That's there for your edification, this is our attempt or was our attempt to give you full disclosure. Now, state law requires that we maintain enterprise funds the way they're supposed to be maintained. That caveat has been ignored. That's what state law says. Mr., uh, you meant to, you can verify that? You, I can't remember the, the site number right off the top of my head, but there's, there's a whole list of stuff when you're going to establish an enterprise fund, you have to establish how it's going to be used and you're required by state law to maintain it. We've ignored that in the past, we're trying to address it now. Just a minute.
Yep.
So from nineteen, sev, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, there was four million two hundred and fifty-two thousand fifty-three dollars, water and sa, wastewater and solid waste. It was five million one fifty-one, two eighty-three. They also took over six million dollars out of the airport fund. And people have been asking me, Mr. Mayor, where did that money go? And this is the explanation I've come up with. These are restricted dollars, okay? Call them y, yellow dollars. Once it gets to the general fund, it ceases to be yellow dollars, it just becomes green dollars. And so the accounting falls, we, we know how the money was spent, but we can't tie it back to these transfers. Is that right, Ms. Davis? That's, that's the problem. Problem number two. Long-term debt history, in twenty twenty-three, we're up to ninety-one million, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and eight hundred, uh, eight forty-two. We voted on one debt bill, and that's to fix our water tanks, if my memory serves me And I've got a full breakdown of what the long-term debt is, the payments, all that stuff. And, Mr. Mayor, I, you, do you have a question for me?
No, that's, no, we're not starting that, we're going to go through the council first and then, and then, after that, then we'll go to public.
I'm good, but I hope, I hope that everybody understands that we were given this problem and we're trying to deal with it best we can. We may not have the best plan, there's a bunch of smart people up here, but we're not, any of us collectively or individually, totally smart. Okay? We've got a problem, we took a stab at it, all ten of us voted for it. You guys are extremely upset, I understand, I got my water bill. It went up almost a hundred percent. I got it, I understand exactly. But I don't, I don't know where else to get the money. We're, we're going to actively pursue grants.
Excuse me, sir, if you would leave, if, you know, you know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You, he's interrupted a number of times and all I'm saying is that we, there will be in Okay, okay, Councilman, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, you have a right to speak, just as anyone else does. But I'm going to go back to what Councilor Moore said. Let's be respectful, let's follow rules, and let's work through this together. I understand your frustrations, I'm as frustrated as you are, but let's work through this. Excuse me, I'm speaking right now, I think you heard that on TV the other night. So, excuse me. And, now, see? All we're here tonight is, we're going to listen to you all, we're here to advertise for a public meeting, but again, let's be very respectful of each other because that's what's disappeared in this country. We need to be respectful of others and not just about me. And I believe that if we could get that done, we could move along very well. But when we have this disrespect for another person and putting yourself amongst them, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't take that, I don't tolerate that. So if you're going to yell and scream, you won't, I will not be listening. Your words will just go in one ear, gather rapid speed and exit my other ear. So we will listen to you and be respectful and follow the rules. And we will get this accomplished. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Councilor Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so tonight, I think, I think we've heard a lot about why we're where we're at and I think we've heard that we as, as a council made a mistake trying to go to a tiered system, which was a mistake and we all own it, no ifs, ands or buts about it. I don't think anybody, uh, understood or has read the resolution of how we're trying to address this, but we're looking at trying to go to a flat rate of three dollars and fifty cents for a thousand gallons of water. Now, I don't know how many of you guys go to the windmills, I don't know how many of you guys go to the Culligan Water Store and go get five gallons of, of water, but for fifteen gallons of water, that costs you three dollars and seventy-five cents, okay? The city is proposing right now in this, in this resolution that we're talking about changing, is to where you're going to get a thousand gallons of water delivered to you for three dollars and fifty cents. Now, I think that's going to be fair, it helps the city try and work on our infrastructure issues, which is our big, obviously. I don't know how many people in this room know that on Super Bowl Sunday, we were almost in a major catastrophe here in the city of Roswell. The wastewater plant went down because of the power with XL, our generators weren't working. We were seven hours into and only an hour or two away from having sewer backed up into our homes. We were had, we had sewer lids that were being blown off. We've got a lot of issues that have been kicked down the road over the last twenty years. And I'm not going to say it's the last administrat, it's stuff that, that have, we've spent a lot of money on a lot of things, but we haven't taken care of... but we haven't taken care of, of our infrastructure like we should. And so right here, right now, as we move to the future, I don't want to talk about things of the past, I want to talk about where Roswell goes in the future. And that's what's important for all of us. I'm born and raised here, I know a lot of you guys are born and raised here, okay? Our kids are here. We have to work together as a team, as a family, as people from Roswell, to make the future of Roswell better. We've got BuiltWise is coming out, the bus plant, we've got the Reno Air Races that are coming. Those are going to be big things that are going to make a huge difference for this community. But right here, right now, we have to understand that we have some a- major issues facing the city of Roswell. Us, not just the city council, not just the city of Roswell, but us. This is an us thing, this is a family thing. And so right here, right now, what's being proposed, we made a mistake doing the tiered system. We were sold some goods that we should have paid more attention to instead of letting them say, look at my bill, and this is what the average is going to be. Okay? Big difference than, from what a lot of you guys have. But at three dollars and fifty cents for a thousand gallons of water, how do you beat that? I don't think you do. But we have to take care of our community, we have to take care of our utilities, our landfill, wastewater and water, and I appreciate everybody being here, and I'm sorry we made that mistake, I own it and everybody else up, up here owns it, but we're going to fix it. And we need you to be a part of that team. And, and before this is all said and done, I'm hoping that I can get the mayor to create a utility or an enterprise task force where each one of our wards can put together two or three people that can sit down and look at PowerPoints and help us address the problems also, so that the, the, the family, the community are all working together to make a difference for Roswell. And that's what this is all about. Thank you.
Yes, uh, if, if, uh, if the council will, uh, allow me, I, the, our city manager has been putting together with the help of some staff, if we can discuss that, or he can at least tell you now what we want to have the public hearing on, and this is about, it's not a work that's finished yet, but it's what, uh, what we're looking at being a realistic solution to this problem. And if you would, uh, yeah, Mr. Cavan, you're, or you're, Chad, his phone, his microphone's not...
Would you try again, please?
Test, okay. Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor Jennings, members of the council, members of the public. Uh, you're, you're here today, of course, uh, because of the water bills. Uh, I'm going to be respectful of your time, we want to hear you, uh, that's why we place this on the front end of the agenda. Uh, you've heard, uh, the mayor and the council talk about the issues with budget. We're not covering our costs in our water fund, uh, that's been going on for several years now. Uh, one of the first things we're going to do is request grant funds to provide an analysis or study of our critical infrastructure. You've heard some numbers thrown around here tonight of how many miles of pipe are in the ground, it's more than three hundred, uh, miles of pipe. Most of that was generated or, or put in the ground, uh, seventy-five to a hundred years ago. Uh, what you see before you here tonight on display is some of that cast iron pipe that blew out recently on Montana. Uh, that's going all the way down Montana Street, and we see it at several sites. Uh, so first things first, we're going to request a grant fund from the Water Trust Board, uh, as of Monday, to request funds for the study. We don't even have funds to do a proper study, but that's the first thing that needs to occur. We need to identify the pipe, what type of pipe, where it's at, how do we address it and attack it, uh, in the community, uh, so we're not just fixing leaks all over, as you may or may not have noticed in the city, those leaks have ramped up in the last couple of years, so that's costing us several million in just emergency repairs each and every year, uh, to fix. Uh, again, we're, we're not covering costs. So, we have to have a study of that, uh, so that we can put together a plan. But we also have to have the revenues in place to even do the study, so we're going to go out and ask for the grant. We think we'll get it, we've talked to some people on the Water Trust Board, they said, yes, you've got to adjust your rates, but we can get you a grant so you can do your study. Uh, we know that the progressive rate system, uh, that was implemented as of July first was overly aggressive, we know that now. We didn't realize that at the time, I think we were sold a bill of goods, uh, that person is no longer with the city. Uh, and we are going to fix this. Uh, so, kudos to the, the governing authority, uh, for stepping up and stepping in ver- in the front lines, uh, to address it. Uh, we are going to have hearings on this issue moving forward, uh, and those will, of course, be open, uh, for public discussion as well. So we look to fix this problem together. First things first, uh, we've got to get, we've got to cover our costs, we must cover our costs, uh, and we've got to do more than just react to repairs, we've got to have a plan in place with identified pipe and type, um, to start attacking this problem. We know that there's forty-four miles of critical pipe that must be replaced. It costs approximately one million dollars for three quarters of a mile, uh, of pipe, uh, to replace that. That's not an overnight solution, uh, that's going to take years, if not decades, but we've got to start somewhere. We know about the tanks, all, all of those, uh, issues that have been, uh, talked about here tonight. Um, so with that, Mayor, I'd take any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions, councilors of, Mr. Cole?
Oh, yeah.
I have Camp Angela Moore, Counselor Moore, and then Counselor Arnold and Counselor Orpessa.
Dad, we, we want to hear from the people, and I was just kind of asking of us councilors to be a little mindful and let those people that signed up to speak, be able to speak, uh, you know, we get to talk afterwards as well, and this is just a, it, this isn't a hearing to advertise, so I just want you all, we're following the rules, guys, and so, if you signed up to speak, you'll get to speak, if you didn't sign up for tonight, if you didn't, then, then you'll have to, uh, uh, attend one of the other hearings or, uh, uh, or meet with somebody else to be heard. But all I was, all I'm asking is if the councilors can shorten our, we can shorten our comments and allow the people that hear, that signed up to speak, to be heard.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Arnold, we had two other people on the agenda, and Counselor Arnold and then Counselor Orpessa, and then we will see where we go from there. Counselor Arnold.
Actually, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Cole? Mr. Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
My questions are mainly for you. I, I agree, and I, I, I'm definitely looking forward to, um, the opportunity for public participation, but I, I also want them to be educated as to how we've resolved, or at least attempted to resolve. So, these questions, I hope, may give you a little bit of clarity on, on what has, you know, been proposed tonight. Mr. Cole, what are we, are, does this ordinance have a tiered system in it?
No, ma'am, this is a flat rate system, the same as our old flat rates in terms of no tiers.
Okay, so what was the previous flat rate?
The previous flat rate was two dollars and forty-three cents.
What is the new proposed flat rate?
Three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Another question I think has actually come before people is the amount of access fees, there's a lot of people questioning the access fees. Um, as I understand it, those have always been there, but they're now apparent because of the transparency requirements. Can you please explain the access fees and, or maybe Mr. Sanchez can, as far as why they are just now showing up, but have actually really always been here?
So, that's a great point, Counselor Arnold, those access fees have been there. Uh, what we wanted on our water billing statements was to be absolutely transparent, uh, with the public as to what they were being billed for, uh, and so those access fees are now on the billing statements and broken out.
Okay, yeah, so there's a lot more information, which sometimes is a good thing, but also sometimes confusing. So, um, at, as I understand it, the bill, the first three thousand gallons are, are free and part of the bill, correct? And then after that is when the initial first thousand gallons is charged for the three fifty?
That is correct.
Okay, so, um, at this point, I think Councilman Corn had noted that the state requirements does not allow the city or municipalities to refund. How do we plan to actually, is this going to be retroactive? What is the proposal as far as when, when these changes take place and what can we do about any, um, damage that's been done by the tier system at this point?
Yes, ma'am, so as we've discussed, um, my job is not to create the legislation, my job is to implement the legislation. The legislation or the ordinance, uh, is the law, uh, of the city, and it's my job to implement that law. Uh, to go retroactive, and I'll let the E-City Attorney speak to this issue specifically, if you want to get in detail, uh, would be an anti-donation violation of the state. Uh, there are several other remedies that you could look at in terms of, uh, initiating, uh, a new rate. Uh, so you had an old rate that was a flat rate at two dollars and forty-three cents. You went to a tiered rate system as sold by the water superintendent at the time who created the study from the national averages, that went to the highest tier, which was anything above eighteen thousand gallons of water consumption. And we did that during the middle of summer, in July, during peak consumption. Not the best idea, I will say that that gentleman is no longer with the city, he was from Spearfish, and he's not running this study, uh, or this proposal. So, it, it might be beneficial to go ahead and rees- read the proposal as drafted.
Please.
Yes. Effective July one, the city raised water and wastewater rates to a tiered system. This resulted in a substantial rate increase across the board for municipal water users. This amendment, this amendment would scale back those increases after three thousand gallons, the price of water at point zero zero three five cents per gallon, or three dollars and fifty cents per one thousand gallons. Wastewater rates will be two dollars and sixty-nine cents per gallon, again, flat rate, this versus tiered. This amendment would also include decrease or increase for annual rates based on the Consumer Price Index for urban consumer water and sewer trash collection services.
Thank you very much, yeah, I just, I, I am definitely interested in hearing from the public, but I wanted them to understand that we had, we have heard you. We do know that this could have been done better, but I believe that we came back to the table and, and are proposing something tonight that is actually something that we can all work together to address our infrastructure and to understand that it's a, a difficult economy right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Just, I'm sorry, not now, we, we have to go by how it's according to Robert's rules. Councilman Orpessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have a, a couple of questions for, one for, for our city manager and one for our legal department. Is the proposal that, that we're talking about, is that in, in, do we need to work on it anymore?
Counselor Orpessa, uh, this opens the door for hearings on water, uh, rates, and, and, and yes, uh, there, you may have questions, you may need data, you may want to revise, uh, but this opens the, the hearing period uh, for a new water rate in place of the tiered rates, and I'll let Mr. Ita- Itema, uh, speak to that if, if...
Counselor Orpessa, and some background for those in the audience, so, state law for us to change an ordinance requires that the council have a two-week period following a publication in the newspaper. So tonight, the city council would vote to publish in the newspaper, it would appear on Sunday, and two weeks from Sunday, the council could then take action, that would be September thirtieth. If the council holds a special meeting on September thirtieth, the rates would be effective for that month, and as in all of September, and bills would be implemented with the new low, significantly lower rates for the October billing period.
Well, I, I guess you answered my question, because I was going to ask if there is a, a, a process that we could waive part of the process and be able to, to have the hearing tonight and vote on it?
Unfortunately, no, the, the absolute quickest the council can ever get a res- an ordinance through is fifteen days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lady Moore.
Hi, Dylan.
Okay, that's all we have. Is there any, any other council that care to say something before we go to the public? Count, Councilman, Council?
Hey, listen, I want to let everybody here know, I actually ran on fixing our water infrastructure. That was the reason I ran for city council. And, um, also noting that in 2017, looking at the city of Roswell, unfortunately wasteful spending of our tax dollars brought me to where I'm at right now. And, you know, getting our infrastructure fixed was very important to me, it should be very important to all of you guys. And, um, seeing, I want to say over sixteen million wasted out of our enterprise fund from 2017 to 2022 was heartbreaking. Hence the reason I'm here right now. But, um, my goal was to improve the water infrastructure by raising the rates somewhat. Trust me, not one of these council members up here voted for what we got today. And I, you've heard the city manager speak earlier, we're missing another, uh, an employee from the city, maybe good riddance, who knows? But I'm here to tell you guys, uh, it was done with good intentions, but, um, all roads are usually paved with good intentions that go bad, but listen, guys, the good intentions were there, but it's, it's, it's out there now, and it's here to be fixed. And, um, man, it's great to see all you guys from Roswell show up. Obviously, this is important to you guys, uh, it means a lot to see everybody come out and, and voice their opinion. Uh, you guys are powerful in numbers, and, and thank you, guys. We'll fix this.
Okay, thank you, next we have, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Maruho, and then we'll go to public comment.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Uh, what we've, we're going through is tough, um, it didn't only affect you, it affected everybody, including the councilors. Um, just hang in there, let's try to wait till everything gets solved, I think it's going to be good, and like you said, we're all grow- born and raised here in Roswell. Let us fix this, and alls we're asking is for respect, and within time, it'll be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, you know, at this time, I would yield to Councilman Hildebrand to put the motion that has been described by Councilman, uh, or by our city manager, Mr. Cole, to have him put it on the, on the, on the table, so then we can discuss it, and, and then, and we will go to public comment at that time. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, amending chapter twenty-six regarding water grades as a regent's ordinance twenty-four dash zero five.
Second. We have a motion by Counselor Hildebrand, second by Counselor Cavan for, uh, resolution twenty-four dash twelve. Is there any discussion, I think everybody's heard what it's about, this is only for public discussion. Is there, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is that all right, or you need a voice vote? You need a written vote?
Voice vote is fine.
Voice vote, okay. By a vote of... Oh, excuse me, okay, Counselor, uh, Counselor, uh, Hildebrand.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I've been doing some research on...
Counselor Hildebrand, can you, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've been doing, since July, looking at this rate increase, and knew in July that it was a, that it had, it was, had a lot of fal- fallacy... and knew in July that it was, that it had, it was, had a lot of fallacy inside of. So, Mr. Mayor, I went and I given all the councilors this. This is not the first time everybody's seen this. But I took the water department budget as to what they put in for their budget. And I compared it to the twenty-four budget. And you'd look at what they have as revenue minus their personnel budget, minus their operating budget, minus their debt service, minus the debt service on the smart meters. And before capital outlay, they've got nine million dollars in excess revenue over those operating expenses. But part of that is the eight million dollars to take out for the water tanks. So they have now, if you take out the eight point seven million dollars that they had put in their budget for capital outlay, based upon the revenue that was in their budget, there's a overage of one point two million dollars. Now, items that we talked about when we went through this rate study and knew that they were not in the budget. There was a bad debt provision that was not in their budget, which needs to be in there. That's three point six five percent of their sales. There was re, there was infrastructure reinvestment that was not put in, which they had requested four million dollars. That needs to be put back in. Emergency repair fund in addition to their normal fund, an additional five hundred thousand dollars. So you take those items and subtract them from their revenue with all their operating expenses, and I come up with three point seven million dollars in a shortfall. Well, if you take that shortfall and gauge it against just the water revenue, not, not loans or any of that, just revenue, you're twenty-nine percent short to cover the additional four million and the additional half million. And all I can do is take city staff budget and work with. Now, if they made some budget mistakes, we haven't, we haven't totally heard about them. So, Mr. Mayor, I know this, this is a fifty percent increase in.
Yes.
In this, and I'm proposing a thirty percent increase to be looked at at a later date. I know we have great needs. Now's the first time I heard from Mr. Cole tonight that he's going to ask for funds. I've never heard of that, about this plan until tonight. Because part of the problem I had with asking for more money was, we need a plan.
Amen.
And I, when I decided to run for this city council, that was part of the issue. Where's the plan? There are none. We need a plan that's accountable. Folks, did you realize that we passed, or they created a master plan back in twenty sixteen? Where was that plan? It was sitting on a shelf. I've pulled that plan back out. And we need to operate or have some kind of measurement with a plan. I commend you, Mr. Cole, for bringing this up now because that's new news to this council that we did not, was not aware of. And I also ask, we have a grant writer with the city, and I've asked her today to contact Senator Luhon's office because, to find out what is available in infrastructure grants that the federal government has. We cannot repair all of these lines on the backs of the people of Roswell. Just impossible. We can't do it. Because it's in excess of, and I hate to, to correct you, Counselor Corn, but the last I was told, it takes one point two million dollars to do, uh, one million dollars to do three quarters of a million mile. That's in excess of fifty million dollars at today's prices. And I've had a conversation with the mayor that we also, there are other remedies that we need to talk about. We need to get people in Santa Fe to start giving municipalities more control over their money. Uh, I E., they need to give us some of that grocery receipts money back to us. They're taking way too much of the grocery receipts and overspending it. And unfortunately, it never gets south of I forty. We don't get it. So they need to give us. They need to give us control. They need to give us control by reverting some of those funds back to us. Now, that's going to be a hard task to take care of because we're in the minority when it comes to the legislatures in Santa Fe. But that's another idea to take care of, to create more revenue. Because there's just no way that we can put fifty million dollars in additional cost on the ratepayers of the citizens of Roswell. We have to find other solutions to this, which is what the mayor talked about. But I'm proposing, and, and I'm not going to do it now, but I will do it when we hold public hearing, that this rate increase is a flat thirty percent rate increase because I have numbers. I've done the research based upon the budgets, and I have numbers that will show it. And I've given all the councilors this. This is not the first time that this has been given to councilors. And I want to have further dialogue and further discussion, but, and trying to be, and I'll share this piece of paper with anybody because this all comes out of public record so that you can see that. And so, I don't have all the copies tonight, but I'll, we'll make them available somehow, some way. But I want to, we must have a rate increase, but I want it to be a reasonable rate increase that doesn't bankrupt our, our ratepayers. I mean, we also have other issues. When the lady said that her consumption rate was, was tremendously higher. Well, I don't know when the last time we've recalibrated any of these meters. And. And that's a thing that has to be addressed as well, is the calibration of these meters so that people are paying for what they truly are consuming. I have no faith and confidence in some of this. I've heard one person's consumption rate went from eighty-eight thousand gallons to two hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons. How did that happen? I mean, I don't know how that happened, nor do they. But we have a problem, and it's not just in our rate structure, it's with our metering system. And unfortunately, folks, you got stuck paying for a system and you're still going to pay for it. That's a bad decision that was made, but we can't do anything about it. But you are stuck paying another, what was that, Counselor, twenty million dollars? Over a period of time. If we didn't have that to tackle, that money could be used back into the infrastructure system. But I'm just telling you, Mr. Mayor, I do not support a fifty percent rate increase. I will support a thirty percent rate increase, but I'm not going to bring it to the table tonight because we'll do it at a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and, uh, just what you talked about on those meters is that the company that the city bought their meters from and we paid for till two thousand and thirty-seven, uh, has gone bankrupt.
Eighteen million. Eighteen million dollars.
It wasn't anything we did. It just, we paid eighteen million for it and, uh, we, they paid for them with bonds and so they're all paid. But, uh, we're stuck with their meters and not one person that would, these were supposed to be electronically read meters. And, uh, I don't think we lost any employees when we went to that stat, that system. Okay, next we can go to public participation. And on the list I have, I would ask that you, when you come up, according to the things, please list or tell us your name and your address on where you live and, uh, and bring that up. And there is a limit of three minutes. And I'm, that's, that's what we have. There's a number of people, if they cover your issue, rest assured, we will address this again in another public hearing. So if you, if, if it's already been covered, uh, so everybody can get home as quick as they can, uh, that would be good. On the top one on this, on the first list I have was, uh, Gregory Maloney, then Leandro Montoya, then it looks like DJ Rodart, Rodart? And then Jose Reyes. If you could, Mr. Maloney, if you could come up, and then Laurent Leandro, if you guys could kind of form at the back and all. So it's Maloney, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Leandro Montoya. It looks like DJ Rodart, uh, and then Jose E. Reyes, and then Charles E. Thompson. If you could come up, Mr. Maloney.
Uh, my name is Greg Maloney. I live at Eight River View Circle, uh, Roswell, New Mexico. The last public hearing, I spoke as well. Um, we, I think a lot of us saw this coming, and that's why we, we got together. I realize I'm a business owner here in town, so I understand you have a budget. We have a short bu, a shortness in the budget, there's something that has to be done. From what I've heard, it's about a thirty percent, um, shortfall. Doing the math, if we were, our old rate was at two point four five per thousand gallons, and the proposal is three point five, um, to me, I, quick calculator, that's about thirty percent. So I know, I think it was originally fifty percent that was put in the amendment, but now it's bumped to fifty or fifty percent. I would propose that if we're short thirty percent, that's, there's no reason to gain twenty extra percent for, for a maybe or a what-if. Um, if it's needed for infrastructure later, then we can, we can do what most people do and have small adjustments. I'd also ask, um, I'm on city water. I live about three hundred yards from the city property, so I'm in the county. Uh, forever and ever, there's been an unknown, um, ordinance where people that are hooked to the city water, um, but don't sit, live in the city are paying double. So when we're talking about a thirty percent increase on top of it, anyone who's tied onto the city, we're, we're getting hit with sixty percent, um, of the increase because we're paying everything double. Um, so I would ask that, why we're working on the water ordinance and getting all of that fixed, that two hundred percent or, or double what everyone else pays, to me is, there's no reason for it, and it makes more sense to be, to not have that. Understanding that the water department, and, got, just one more thing. Understand that the water department is pretty self, what I would call self-funded. They don't get money from property tax or the, the city. It's all coming from revenue generated from the water department. So I would ask you to think about, if it's self-funded, why are we charging someone more that lives outside of the city? If it's funded with property tax and things that people are not paying, then that would make sense, but it's not. It's, it's all self-funded. I'm a customer just like anybody else, whether I live three hundred yards south of me or not. So I'd ask that you consider that when you're addressing the ordinance. And I would, I would support because I understand you have to make the, make the revenue up, a thirty percent increase, but a zero percent increase for, um, for an extra burden on people living outside of the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Leon, Leandro Montoya, and then DJ Rodart, Jose Reyes, Charles Thompson. Leandro, and I'm sorry, I can't read this one. Julie, maybe Stovall, Stovall, I can't read that, sorry. But, okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, my name is Jose Reyes.
Excuse me.
And I'm here to complain about that.
Excuse me, if, members of the public, if you look above the R, you can see the time, so you can be aware of how much time you have left. Above the R on the back wall.
Okay, okay, I see. Okay, like I said, good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm, I'm here to complain about the water race. I would like to ask a question. How much money you save for repairs every month? What percentage?
Do we save?
Okay, when you receive every month, what percentage you receive for repairs? Don't gonna be waiting until this completely broken to raise the water to give that repair?
Yeah, the, the water, the water bill every year, every year, it's based with what we project. Our replacement schedule has to be for, for parts and for the repairs that we have to make. That's a yes. Now, the problem we don't have is, that's what we spent last year. If we bought, that's why the twenty percent was for anything above that, that, so we can look for grants, do, uh, planning studies that are required to get grants and to make sure we had plenty of money to go after every means we can find, uh, to, to get that up. You know, and that's what, we don't save money actually as, well, uh, we budget it, we budgeted what we plan, what we think our repairs are going to be. Uh, but you, it's just like when you have two leaks right in a row in, in the same pipe or in, you know, there's an issue with wear and tear, but that's it.
I see in here in the bill, uh, Act Six charges three times. Three times, they have for water, sewer, sanitation and water, they charged it, all three charges. I mean, I mean, this is suggestion. I would suggest to have one time pick it up the garbage a week. That will save money to the city. Another one, read the meeting for the water every two months. That will save money to the city too. So this is my suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Rodarte, please.
I'm Charles Thompson. I live at three oh eight East Onyx, Roswell, New Mexico. I'm a, a employee at, I'm sim, I work at cemetery. I'm a employee of the city of Roswell. I also represent Local Fifty-One. Hey, um, you know, some of you know me, some of you don't. Those of you that know me know that, uh, I work, I give one hundred and fifty percent. I don't discriminate from anybody, anywhere when I'm doing my job. Doesn't matter to me if you had to go and wash cars to pay for your, your funeral or whether you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank to pay for a funeral. I treat them all the same. I give them one hundred and fifty percent respect. I give them the best that I can because it's the darkest moments of their lives. But for me, I feel like I'm being slapped in the face because every time I turn around, I come up here a while back and I'm getting told, we can't give you a raise, we can't do nothing for you. You know, and that's, that's heartbreaking because I give my all, which is expected of me, or I don't have a job. But I can't, we gave up last year and let y'all throw out a bone and give us change to keep ourselves happy. Didn't make me happy. I really didn't want to sign, but it was either take it or leave it. I'm right here right now, again, asking everybody, looking at each and every one of you because I feel that I got to see you in the eye. Because like you guys, I don't get a thirty thousand dollar raise. I don't get a ten thousand dollar raise. I don't get a forty thousand dollar raise. I get a nickel or a dime. Because what y'all gave us four percent was taken as soon as our insurances went up for eye, dental, what have you. These are all things that, that hit me, and then they, I get hit with the water bill too. All these are, that four percent went out the window. And then y'all don't want to help us with, uh, with our, with our step increase this year? I mean, it's ridiculous. Ridiculous, what do we do? Where, where are the funds at that supply that we hold for rainy days? When's a rainy day? We're going to strangle that money and where's it going to go? We need to take, stop letting our, our city live on disability because we, the way it's going, we're going to be on life support. I know a lot of you, you know, and I respect a lot of you here, but it's, it's heartbreaking to see y'all in the face and know that you can look at me and tell me that, yeah, you know what I'm feeling, you don't. I go home to my family. It's not about me being able to take my family to McDonald's or to a restaurant. It's about me being able to put food on the table. Being able to take care of the people I need to take care of.
Your time is up now.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bridges Bhakta. I'm, uh, I live at twenty-three thirty-one North Main Street. Um, I think falls into Ward Two, Councilman Kevin, if I'm correct. Anyway, uh, I want to say thank you, Councilman Arnold, you, Councilman Hildebrand, and you guys answered, asked most of the question that I actually wrote it down and, uh, to city manager. Um, I do have a couple of other question. Uh, I think, uh, so, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, one more time, the tier-based system is repealed, correct?
That is the intention of this proposed amendment.
Okay.
Is to.
Has it been, but it will be repealed if I'm correct. I, hoping, and we're. Has it been, but it will be repealed if I'm correct, I, hoping, and we're going on a flat base increase. Now, I'm also representing all the motels in town, I think there's twenty-four, give or take one or two, but that's kinda speaking on behalf of them. And going from my previous bill, five oh six, to tier-based system, that I paid five oh six, a month ago, seventeen twenty-three, I'm currently holding it. Then the consumption from ninety-six, it's eighty-four thousand, and the base increase was the same. So if you can keep this in mind, that hotels does not, you know, whatever the housing uses, hotel, if there is a base increase, try to keep the base, you know, or at least, instead of, but this is, hopefully it's repealed, so I'm not gonna repeat what it says here. But, just on top of my head, I was trying to do the calculation from, going from two forty-three, the previous rate, to three fifty, flat rate, I think that's about forty-five percent to sixty-six percent increase, on top of my head calculation. So, instead of thirty percent increase, that's, I think, I understand that all of you have a tough job as is, trying to improve our infrastructure, and God knows we need it, I personally can vouch for that for my motel. Also, the wastewater, that's, I believe it was dollar seventy-nine, or the old rate, and going to two sixty-nine, that's, top of my head, I think that's like sixty-six percent increase instead of thirty percent, or I could be wrong, but, but fifty-four cents increase. Now, other, like I said, most of the question was already asked, and I don't wanna repeat it, but I do wanna say thank you, but do consider the business, including all the motels, Airbnb, and the hospitals, and all the apartments, the increase that's gonna affect them.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Your name, please?
My name is Brijas, B-R-I-J-E-S-H, last name Bhakta, B-H-A-K-T-A. I couldn't understand, I don't know if you're, I was the first one to sign in, so I didn't know if you called my name or not, but since nobody was standing here, so I stood up.
You're not on this list, I don't know, okay.
Well, I signed up, I was the first one.
Oh, you're on the other list, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, this, I, I'm sorry, this, Uvaldo, Varela, is that right? And then I have Ed, Eduvideo Torres, Judith Anderson White, and, I don't know what this one is, something Sosa, then Gabriel Torres, okay.
Name's Wado Alenzuela nine oh nine, congratulations, guys, y'all filled bester the public, everybody Good job. Secondly, knowing the rates were going up on July the first, I shut my water down, basically. I'm not, I mean, I'm bathing at the gym, no water usage. My bill was still, water usage on the bill, two hundred and sixty-five thousand gallons, and I'm not using any water. Now, these electronic meters of yours, they cannot be right. No way in the world. No way in the world. There's no way I can shut off my sprinklers, no water usage, and I'm still using this amount of water, please, that's a no-brainer. I just looked at some of your rates off the top of my head, you jumped them a hundred and forty percent on some of those. That is not right. I know y'all are up here saying, people from the past did this, and this, did that. Y'all are in here now, and I'm glad y'all admitted to making a mistake. When I make a mistake, I correct it immediately, so I expect the same. Thank you.
Come ahead, ma'am, and your name, then.
Kimberly Sosa.
Okay, Kimberly Sosa, okay, you're down the list, okay.
Okay, I wanna say, I'll make a comment, it kinda bothered me, Mr. Corn, that you made a comment that we're, that we're dumb, don't dumb, don't, don't down-talk us. A lot of us have read and looked at those, that, that graph, that, that is in our bill. And for you, Ms. Christina, I have a full-time job, I don't get off of work and sit at the house. I have activities, and I am involved in the community, so don't say, I wish I could come to all the, the meetings, but I can't. I have other things I have to do. So there's a lot of people in here that are concerned, but this is why we voted you all in, so that we don't have to come, take every meeting, because we believe you all know what you're doing. So we don't, we don't all just sit at the house, okay? And I don't appreciate those two comments from you and Mr. Corn. But what I really wanna say is, I don't want to become the town of Flint. I do understand the water hike has to be made for the repairs, but I don't understand why the increase gets so much. I do expect in my bill to double, but I did not expect for my bill to triple. And I'm a single woman, a single person in my house. I hope you all realize, something is wrong with those numbers, which you've already know, some of y'all have already expressed it, but I hope all of you all realize, something is wrong with these numbers, and something is wrong with these charges. I hope that the corrections that you say that you're going to correct are already in the process, and my, my, and if so, how long is this process going to be? And also, will there be assistance or support for the citizens who are already struggling, and they have to pay for a water bill? We have a lot of people here, that, we have families that are on fixed incomes, we have families that are low incomes, some of them are already struggling, whether they're gonna pay for prescriptions, or I'm gonna pay for food. Now, they have to decide, is it prescriptions, is it food, or do I pay my water bill? So, like I said, I, I appreciate you all being this group to finally take care of business. It did not make any sense, we've had city councilmen's years ago, that should have been taking care of business, and I appreciate all of you, every last one of y'all, for your courage, your determination, and your intelligence, to finally start fixing something here. And I'm also.
Your time is up.
Okay, and I'm praying for all of you all, I'm gonna do this prayer, I'm praying for all of y'all, that we all, that you all can find a medium to where the problem can be fixed, and at the same time, not let the people struggle.
Counsel Lady Halberson.
Ms. Sosa, yes, this is why we're here, and this is why we're voting on this amendment, because we do see a problem with the numbers, and we're trying to fix it. I know a few of you have come up and mentioned, you know, that there's a problem with the numbers, we're aware of that, and that's why we're trying to fix this.
Okay, next I have Judith Anderson White, she's here, don't see her, I don't guess, Gabriel Cobos, Jesse James, Jason Garcia, and Julie Ferguson. Yes, sir?
Hello, everybody, my name is Gabriel Cobos, I live right there on South Main in This, that's been going on is quite unacceptable, for one. And then one thing I do wanna bring up, is something that Corn talked, talked about, which was rent. I have this recorded, from the conversation I had from Mr. Corn. We are paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for code enforcement to be in a building that the city does not own. Why is that? Mr. Mayor?
For the code enforcement to be across the street, that was the, an agreement the previous council entered into, as I recall, to be over across the street. They had committed us to being into that building, that was the previous administration.
And I'm pretty sure that all the people here in Roswell are not happy about paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a building that we do not own.
Well, that, that's true, but.
So something needs to be done. They need to go back where they belong, and that's that.
It's on our radar too, as well as that, we weren't happy with that either, but that's the cards we were dealt.
Right.
We signed, the previous council signed a, an agreement with them for five years, or however long it was, I don't remember right off. But they signed an agreement, and that's, so, as soon as that lease is up, we'll, I'm sure we'll find another place for them to stay.
They need to be in a building that's owned by the city, that we do not have to pay for. There's plenty of buildings, they can move immediately, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So, that needs to be done. Thank you.
Jesse James, and Jason Garcia, and then Julie Ferguson, and Edward Cafca? Cafca? Mr. James?
Thank you, my name is Jesse James Gomez, I live at two seven two seven Wilshire. Although I know many of the city councils personally, I come to you tonight not as a friend, but as simply a constituent and a taxpayer. These water weight increases are hitting families at quite possibly the worst time in my generation. Many families are just scraping by with brutal inflation causing prices to skyrocket everywhere. Many Roswell people seeing double, even tripling of their water prices, this is thoroughly unacceptable. Everyone is feeling it, but many families are living on a razor's edge and simply cannot afford another bill. For example, my neighbor's the Collins family, hardworking people, who have been here for generations, who have seen unexpected medical expenses this year, and are now hanging on by a thread, and now their water bill has tripled. They are facing dire uncertainty heading again. Or my friend Donna Johnson, elderly lady living on a fixed budget, who has seen her rent increase in the past year, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and now her water bill has doubled. She lamented to me sadly that she had never thought she would live in a time where she had to make a choice between food or water. She is hardly alone, as many in the most vulnerable our city, senior citizens are forced to make choices like this now, this is unacceptable. Many good people who live paycheck to paycheck know that all it takes is one extra expense, a medical bill, a car breaking down, or a doubling of their water bill, and they will go under. Mark my word, that if this continues, this will ruin many good Roswell families. I'm not here to point fingers or to assign blame, I don't know the intricacies of the law, or the financial situation that brought us to this place, but I do believe you guys must fix this, no matter what, before it is too late. Lastly, I'm proud, I'm proud to see many Roswell people here standing up and getting involved in their community, and although we may have serious problems facing our nation, hopefully after this is resolved, we can learn that it's not a man, or a woman, or a political party who will save USA, but American brothers and sisters putting aside their differences to stand together as one. We are all in this together. And if I can say one last thing about the mayor's request to take down my sign, request denied. Nobody will violate my First Amendment rights.
Jason, Jason Garcia, Julie Ferguson, and Edward Cafca? Are you here? I take it you're Julie?
I'm Julie Ferguson, how are ya? Spoke to many of y'all when I got my water bill, a couple weeks ago, because my water bill showed that I used.
Can you please give us your address? Can you please give us your address?
I'm sorry, I don't know what my address, oh, eleven oh one Hall Drive, I'm sorry, I apologize. I also am a business owner at one oh nine South Union, as well. My water bill stated that I used two hundred and eighty-eight thousand something gallons of water in one month. Three hundred thousand gallons of water in one month. My house would be floating down the street, and my yard would be a swamp, basically. I have talked with Ernest, I talked to Mr. Cole, and Ernest had sent somebody out, they thought we had a leak, we do not. My husband is a master plumber, has been a plumber in this town for fifty years, he knew where to look if there was a water leak, there was not a water leak. Since the beginning part of this year, we have called many of our counselors about having issues at our home with no water pressure. As a plumbing owner, plumbing business owner, I probably get twenty calls a week of people complaining about their water pressure at their homes. And all this took place because of the other water, the water meters that got put in. I know, most of y'all didn't vote for that, there are some that are on this, that did. However, the water meters are not right, and I know we have to pay for them, and I'm sorry that we have to pay for them, I'm sorry that the public are the ones that have to pay for them, our homes have to pay for them. But something's gotta be done, they've got to get fixed. Class action lawsuit against the company, I don't know, whatever it is, but the city of Roswell got duped on those water meters. And shame on the ones that did vote for them. Thank you. I don't care who voted for them, I don't care if it was the last administration, or administration thirty years ago, I don't care. Roswell people got duped on those water meters, and they have got to get fixed, and the people of Roswell should not have to suffer with that. I appreciate those that I've talked with, those that I've spoke with at the city, that has helped us out with this bill. I almost had a heart attack when I got it, because it was seventeen hundred dollars for one month, and I almost, I literally almost passed out, I think Will was the first one that I called, just because you're on my phone, so. Anyways, it, it was, it's very heartbreaking to see that this is happening. I appreciate you all taking the initiative to realize there is a problem, and that you own the problem, and that you own that you're gonna try to help fix it. Please, if Jack and I can be of any assistance, as him being a plumber, he knows about pipes, we will be more than happy to help and.
Your time is up.
Help, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Right here.
Counsel Lady, Counsel Lady Arnold?
Yes, actually, Ms. Julie, I'd like to say something. So, in recognizing this, I think, what, in July, my bill, I, I use forty-five thousand gallons, and it's me and a dog in a very small yard. So I became acutely aware. So I do recognize that sometimes there's storm clouds, but out of that comes sunshine, because we may not have seen the true issue with our meters. At this point, going through the process of trying to understand, in council, how do you repair something? Because it's not just where we come back up here and, and we actually change law, you have to go through months of steps to undo something, so it's just as arduous. However, the meters, the meters, I have probably spoken hours and hours to different people trying to understand, plumbers, water conservationists, sprinkler people, just spoke with Aaron Baylock two days ago, so, but in the process, I wanted you to understand that that is actually definitely on my radar, because something is off with the meters. I'm not sure, like I said, I had forty-five thousand, my mother is one person and two dogs, she also had two hundred and twenty thousand. So something is really off, and it's hard to actually gauge who it's happening to and who it's not. So understand that it is on our radar, because I've been speaking loudly about it for several months. However, the process to fixing it, we have to actually do this public hearing, get this passed, so we can balance out and understand what the actual rate is, to see who's being charged more, what, if it's their usage, if it's a meter, it's actually, it's going to require a consultant, which our city manager, Cole, has actually talked about, we're gonna try to bring in a consultant to actually do study, because it's so complex and so convoluted, to try to figure out whose meter is effectively working, who's just using more water, whose meter's off. There has been some talk about the valves, and how there's a pushback and a double charge. We have to study all that, but it all takes time, and government is slow.
I get that, and I appreciate that. Just on the record, this week, this is Thursday, this week, I've had five calls of people that have had water leaks at their meter, and has been leaking for a long time. So it was under our impression. And has been leaking for a long time. So it was under our impression as a plumbing company that people would be notified when they had a leak. Nobody notified us that we, we used two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So something is not clicking somewhere. I appreciate you coming back.
Thank you. Okay, Edward, Edward Cafca, and then it looks like Josh B-O-O-T-Z-I-N and Janet Elridge. Go ahead, uh.
Edward Cafca, eight eleven West Summit Street. I'd like to present a, another alternative that the council may want to consider, and that would be private enterprise.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
Hey, please. Hold it down on the audience, please. Okay, thank you.
Perhaps the city may want to get out of the water sewer and trash business and look for some private companies that'll take, uh, take everything over, put out bids, get requests for proposals or whatever. And, you know, that might be a, uh, cheaper solution. And also, one of you earlier mentioned that in twenty seventeen, sixteen million went wasted. And under some kind of a private arrangement like this, we may not have that problem. That's something else to, uh, consider. Just another solution, perhaps.
Thank you, Mr. Cafca. Josh, is there Josh? Uh, Booton, anyway, Janet Elridge, and then Dolores Freskis, I think, believe she left. Yeah, so, okay, then we have Tasha Olive, or O-I-V-E, O-L-I-V-E, I believe. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Janet Eldridge. I live at twenty-six eleven North Kentucky, number one seventeen. I'm here as the treasurer of the North Springs Homeowners Association. We have four bills and our bills went from twenty-five forty-three to forty-seven forty-one. Uh, I think what you're proposing for the three fifty-four thousand would be very fair. One of my concerns is that our wastewater bill tripled. We have one swimming pool, one toilet, and one sink. I called the water department and she said, well, it's based on the water that runs through the meter. Well, ninety-nine point nine percent of that water goes in the grass and the trees. It doesn't go down the sewer. So there needs to be a better way to figure. Even homeowners don't put everything that goes through their meter down the sewer. They have lawns, they have water, flowers, trees. Uh, and we have many elderly people on social security there that, uh, really can't afford this. But, you know, I hope, I'm happy that you all are working on fixing it because it is really hard for these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, Tasha, and then Bruce Andler, Modesto, uh, Carmona, and Enrique Nahar, I believe. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tasha Olive. I'm at twenty-six oh four-
Can you speak into the mic?
Tasha Olive, twenty-six oh four Bay Meadows Drive, Roswell. Um, hello and good evening to all of you. Um, I know that there's gonna be many good people following me that have outlined problems with the things that have been done. There's been a very, very lazy management of these funds that you guys have been put in charge of. Because Roswell is not that poor of a city. New Mexico is the fifth wealthiest oil state in the United States of America. Why are we having this and having to put it all upon we, the people? So, I know that there are more people behind me, I've talked to them, that are gonna ask you guys some explicit questions. So I'm not gonna do that. All I'm gonna say is that going from a bill of two hundred and fifty dollars to almost six hundred dollars in one month is not acceptable. I'm not gonna do it. I will move. I will leave here. I will sell my home and I will leave here. And I know probably you guys are all thinking, well, she won't sell her home because nobody's buying. Well, that's true. Americans aren't buying because Americans are poor. But immigrants, whether you want to call them legal or illegal, are buying because they have government funds. So what I intend to do is put my home on the market. And the first place I'm gonna put it and as advertised in is gonna be Springfield, Ohio. Next will be Aurora, Colorado. You can live with the mess.
Uh, Council Lady Alveson.
Ma'am?
Council Lady Alveson.
Ma'am, I think all of us here agree with you one hundred percent. We are an oil-rich state. But here's the problem we have is the oil money goes up to the north part of the state and they don't send it back down here.
How come you can't change that?
Can you speak into your mic?
I happen to know that you know people in Santa Fe. So how come, how come you can't get that changed? What's the problem?
Ma'am, I'm not in Santa Fe anymore and there were, uh, there's other legislators and stuff that set up this funding and how the state spends the money. And I'm, I'm, I don't have anything to do with it.
But are we peanuts down here? Do we not count?
Ma'am, I can't, you know, the office and the way it's set up in the government, the state government, or current, or run by elected representatives and senators, and the elected governor and, uh, the cabinet levels of people that they have. I have no control over how they spend their money. I can make suggestions, but just like anybody else can, but I have no control over that. I have absolutely none.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but somebody needs to stand, step up and do something. So do we need to be watching better who we vote for from you guys clear up to there? Is that what we need to do? Because this is failing.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, so you make a very fine point. I think where we've misread that is actually having that much faith, that much faith, faith or dependence on the legislature. What I've learned since being in here is that the money at, in Santa Fe is given to agencies. And if you actually apply for the bonds and, and go in and request grants, there's a ton of funding and grants in different agencies and different departments. So I think what we need to actually look at moving forward, and we've had many conversations, um, about this with other county commissioners, legislators, at, at creating a different approach in how we start to go for funding. Instead of doing it through the legislature, start actually creating teams of, of grant writers. And so that's been a lot of the conversation in the last few months. So please know, we, we are looking at how to bring funding down here differently. And, and we're working on it.
I hope you do. Thank you.
Councilman Elderbrand, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Olive, this is not just a problem in Roswell, New Mexico. What it's gonna take is for people like you to write letters to Santa Fe. And as I said earlier, Mr. Esperino, you live, your family lives in Alamogordo, correct? How serious is their water infrastructure problem over there? A hundred million plus? This is not just a problem with Roswell. It's a problem that Santa Fe won't listen to us and revert some of those funds, as I said earlier. They need to revert those funds back to us. It's gonna take all of you to get on a bandwagon and tell them. We're just a small group of, of, of voice.
Mm-hmm.
But this is an area, Truth of Consequences has a same problem. Portales has a same problem. Close has a big water problem. We haven't. But they've gotta give us our money back. We pay them. Give us our money back. So if you want to make a campaign, that's what you've gotta go do.
Okay.
Is let the people in Santa Fe know that we want our money back.
So I can call some of you guys to get names of people that I need to address?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can call there. You can, the county clerk has all those elected officials that are there.
I think, I think Ms. Arnold just said I can give her a call. So yeah, I appreciate that. And let me say to, to my fellow Roswellians, you better start voting differently. Okay?
No.
Thank you again.
Uh, we have, uh, Bonar Richard, and I think Mr. Baka has already been here. Uh, and then we have Pedro Baca and Peter Reddick. Mr. Bonar, uh, is it Richard? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, uh, at thirteen thirty-seven McCullough. Richard Bonner. I don't really have a lot to add.
In the microphone, please.
I don't have a lot to add, but I do have something. You, you need to appoint at least two people on all your monies leaving town and make them responsible for saying it's a good check or it's a bad check. If you do this, you got a chance. But if you get a crook in your midst, the money's just gonna keep going. So it doesn't matter how you raise it. You need to break this down into like a twenty percent, uh, amount of pipe to lay and start a plan over, say, ten years. Something you can fathom and deal and not absolutely tear the town up. It also won't go haywire all at the same time. Um, I think it's great you're getting such good input from so many people. Mine is a commercial water and my water bill went from a thousand to fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Wow.
And I'm in the affordable housing mobile park. Well, they said raise the rent. These people can't pay four hundred dollars more a month. So a girl that works on the water company gave me a plan that I could get down to a small business of which, I, I mean, I'm a large mobile park, but I'm vacant. And I'm in process of trying to bring it back. But it hasn't been very easy with the pandemic and the state of, uh, New Mexico, what they did as far as bringing these freeloaders in. But I appreciate what you do. And thank you very much. Can I give you this?
Yes. You know, in, in looking at the water repairs, one of the huge, the biggest problems I tried to, to emphasize is that we have pipes, we have forty-five percent of the pipes were put in in five years. Forty-five percent in nineteen forty to forty-five. That is why we have such a critical problem with this cast iron is because it is beginning to fail. And once it starts, it usually kinda goes up more in a progression, a geometric progression than just, you know, like every two or three years. I mean, this was all done in about five years because of the cast iron pipe was the kind of pipe that they had then. And they went to, uh, asbestos concrete pipe after that. So that's why getting a plan together is something we had to do. Why we wanted some of the twenty percent money was to get a, a, a planned group that we can present to Congress and ask the Congress, the United States, to pony up for all the money. When they left out of this town, they left us, they left, went from fifty-five thousand people to less than thirty to pay the bills for all this infrastructure when we left out and when they left out. So that's, we have a lot of plans we have to do. We have to have a plan to get government grants, and that's what part of it was for, as you go through it. Uh, Mr. Baka, I think, was gone. I have Pedro Baca and Peter Reddick. Are you still here, Pedro or Peter? Okay.
I'm Peter Reddick. I live at Cheryl Lane. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's a privilege to be here tonight to be able to speak to you. And as you guys are aware, I have worked for a couple of you guys previously. And so I speak to you guys not as professional, but as a resident and a citizen of Roswell. Um, you know, I primarily am on a fixed income myself, you know, single household. My mother is part-time, makes under a thousand dollars a month. And I, I know people who are single mothers here with multiple children. And to have their bills double, we're talking about a hundred plus percent increase, it's unfathomable. How are people supposed to survive when they're paying a mortgage or rent on, on a fixed income when the income doesn't increase, but you want us to pay a water bill that increases? I'm sorry, a roof over our heads is more important than a water bill. Now, this is tragic. I understand this. But the mismanagement of the funds from us, the taxpayers, is not our fault. That is, in all respect, you guys on the council, that is guys, that is your guys' fault and prior administrations. So what I would like to propose is, I know you guys keep stating that, um, this is an attempt to get this passed. I would like to advise each and every one of you, and I probably speak for more than, more than half the town of Roswell, either pass this, revert this back to normal, fix this, or I can almost guarantee you guys will be voted out next term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, next I have, uh, Lee Beello, B-E-E-L-L-O-E. Pardon? Oh, Pete, you're up here. I'm sorry. I, you just-
I'd like to take Pedro Baca's space and speak instead.
Well, we will ask for people that didn't sign up on time. We will give them an opportunity after everybody who's signed up. We will give them that opportunity before we shut off debate.
Right.
So, uh, Lee, is, right, B-E-E-L-L-O-E?
Lee Bullock.
Oh, Bullock.
Yes. Uh, twelve oh two Princeton, Roswell, New Mexico. And I know you folks have a big job you gotta take care of. But, you know, Roswell is, uh-
Mike?
Passed. I've been here-
Excuse me, I know you guys have a big job to take care of. And I've lived here for seventy, seventy-one years going on. And we used to be a retirement community. And I'm, I think we still are. We want people to move here and continue to live here. But, you know, with water bills like we're getting and other things that are happening, I think we're gonna lose a lot of that. And something that I'm wondering is, is that, I understand that you have to acquire this money to keep us going with water. But what's gonna happen when everybody quits watering and the water bill goes down? Where is this money gonna come from then? You know, I noticed that we got a access fee, which seventy-one years I've never seen in my life. And if it was on there, where was it on the bill at? Because I've never seen an access fee on my bills. I've been paying a water bill for fifty years. And so what I'm wondering, what's the backup plan when, when everybody quits watering? This revenue's not gonna be coming in. What's the backup plan?
Well, we've, uh, we've talked about that, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this, to see where, where we end up and why we need, might be trying to get a little more money so we can make sure we get our plans together and get other revenue sources in here. so we can make sure we get our plans together and get other revenue sources in here. We think we can get other revenue sources to help us with this. But we have to have, our plans have to be, we have to be self-sufficient in each plan or else the public employees that are paid out of those funds, like the gentleman came up and said he didn't get any increase at all. That's right, and that's because we took all the other funds because those funds were short and we had to supplant those with other revenues from the city. And all the blue collar workers, all the ones in the water, wastewater and everything, are paid for by the funds that they generate.
But how are we gonna continue this generation of funds if we do not have people using water?
Well, we'll have to cross that bridge at another day.
And what about, you said that you were trying to acquire grants and loans or whatever from the state to help this problem?
Well, we're trying to get, there is a water funds that we have that we can apply for grants to, but we would also, hopefully, we could get some of the federal government to help us with the city of Roswell. We certainly paid our price in World War II and had a great base, and when they moved out of here in sixty-one to two, we had nineteen ICBM missiles around here. We've certainly done our part for the country. But when they pulled out of here, they have never given us money back in anything. When you go from fifty thousand people to less than thirty, you have a problem because those thirty have had to pay. And for every repair that was done here, regardless of what it was, and you had twice the infrastructure paid for by half the people. That's where they left us.
I know that, but our population is up above thirty thousand now.
Well, we're not back to fifty, so we still have less people paying for it than we had before. When we put together the airbase and everything else, we have less people paying for it.
But I know y'all got a real monkey on your back, but I hope we can come up with something a little more sensible.
We're working on it. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Baca was gone. Okay, we have Rose Giannini, Carrie Moore, and John Connor. Are any of those here? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Carrie Moore. I reside at thirty-two oh one North Kentucky. I am here to address the council on two different issues because I wear two different hats. The first hat will be as the Director of the Chavess County Health Council. We run the two-one-one information line, and we just put out the Chavess County Resource Guide. This guide is a list of the resources available in the county to help people who can't pay their electric bills, their water bills, or various things throughout the county. What I can tell you is that there's no resources to help anybody whose bills are higher than what they are normally at. So I don't know what's gonna happen when you guys decide to shut off all the water for the absorbent amount of rates that you've charged everybody, because there's no money to help pay them or to help them pay you guys. So you're gonna have to address that, and there's gonna have to be a need, because when they have a fifty-nine hundred dollar water bill and they're normally paying sixty dollars, they just can't function. The other reason I am up here is that I am also a consumer of water. So you've already addressed several different things. What I can tell you as a restaurant owner is that I have my bills for the last seven years since 2017. I can break them down. I can give you copies of every single one of them. I have them. I attended every single meeting that you guys had on the water rate increase. We knew it was gonna be fifty-eight percent increase because that's what it was reflecting. My usage at the restaurant was roughly, my highest usage was eighteen thousand gallons, and that was last year in July. All of my rates from there is anywhere from nine thousand to thirteen was my average. My usage for the last month I was in the restaurant was fifty-five thousand gallons and some change. I am no longer in that restaurant. I paid my bill, but now I have overpaid because I didn't use that much water. How am I gonna get refunded my money? I paid over in the extra rate in July when the billing came out too early. I didn't get a credit for that. I've overpaid a bill. Are you guys refunding? How are you gonna address that part? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Would you tell her who sent you that?
You guys got some stuff here. Wow. All right.
No, just your name and...
My name is Jonathan Connor. I reside at five oh six Tierra Brenda. I'm a former budget analyst for the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth Legislative for the State of Hawaii House of Representatives under Marcus Oshiro and Speaker Say. I come to you addressing an issue as a homeowner out here of the past year and a half. My bill has gone, the first six months, from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars after six months, and then as of last week, four hundred and forty, which is just a little bit less than due to owning a motel. And so that's what brings me here. My water has been shut off by me because I have a broken faucet for the past three weeks. There has been no water running in my house. I've been bathing with bottled water. So I would like to see exactly how I've used forty-four gallons of water per hour. That's kind of where I'm at with it. I've had two plumbers out. They say I have no leak. And then I've had the water department basically tell me, "You got a leak," but they never knock on my door. What I'd like to address is perhaps a solution. Everyone's talking about, you know, the problems that they face. What I have seen is that we spend a lot of tax money that's going to the state, and the state is currently sitting on about four point five billion, with a B, excess funds after this legislative session. So I would suggest speaking with the governor. And I would also suggest speaking with the military, since we do have a military base out here, they do use the water, and this is a crisis, I would actually call in FEMA. Because if you explain to them that we're having these kind of issues, water is not just one of the things that is a central part of life, it is the most essential part of life. That being addressed, any of the other issues in this town should be put aside until the water is not repaired but replaced. Another thing to address is, you know, the confidence level that we put into everyone up here. You know, you were saying that, you know, that we're not all that smart, and that's not true. You guys are brilliant. That's how you got here. You've convinced us to put our faith in you. And, Mr. Mayor, I suggest that you wear that hat of yours and go up to the mayor, because the buck stops with you. You can change the rules of anything here. This is Roswell, New Mexico. They didn't make it with snowflakes. You know, they made it with real people, and I believe you're one of them. Other than that, I just want to kind of point out that some of the budget things that they've put into the budget at state level is a balloon park for fifty million dollars. I think our water's more important than that. They've talked about putting in a new stadium for soccer. Our water problem's more important than that. And, you know, I may not speak for everyone, but I do have a little experience...
Your time is up.
So, may I ask one question to this person over here?
Go ahead, quick.
Did Spearhead get paid and how much?
Spearhead?
Speak in the microphone. You have...
Did Spearfish or Spearhead get paid, and how much did they get paid?
So the question, I believe, was the gentleman from Spearfish a paid employee of the city of Roswell? Is that the question?
That is correct.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that, he was an employee of the city of Roswell.
No, I want to know if he got paid and how much he got paid.
You want to know his salary amount?
Well, I think it's somewhat relevant if he got, you know...
And I'm not quite sure of that right off the top of my head.
I just, I've noticed that consulting fees usually tend to balloon the budget.
That's all a matter of public record. I don't know.
Yes, absolutely. It is.
Thank you again. It was an honor addressing you all.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Council Lady Arnold and then Ms. Giannini, Rose? Is that Rose Giannini?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Council, Arnold, go ahead while she's on her way up.
Okay, so this is, I wanted to take just a second to kind of point out, you know, he's bringing up some things, and this is what keeps striking me as off. I think, and I get really confused because I've looked at it so many different areas, but if you have someone, like for instance, I believe we had someone on the council who had a neighbor that was gone two weeks out of the year, and their bill was twice as much. So we have all these variables, and that's where I cannot pinpoint exactly why, but from a thirty thousand-foot view, there is something seriously wrong when, and I want it known that we are aware of it, that there are people researching and looking into and at least bringing attention to it, because we see the differences. But again, it comes to pinpointing when you actually have data entry and you can actually throw something off by a comma. So that's kind of where I'm going. Is it billing? Is it meters? What is it? So I'm gonna keep saying that out loud, that there is something wrong because you have so many people with so many different variances, and people cut back and are still having large bills. So understand, we do see the differences. But like I said, when you have a storm or chaos brings about change. So at least we are very keenly aware of the issues that are before us.
Thank you, Councilor. Yes, Ms. Giannini?
Mayor Jennings and City Council, I thank you for the opportunity to be here, to be able to tell you just what I think about what's going on with us and...
Excuse me, can you state your address, please?
Yes. Did I say my name? It's Rosa Maria Giannani, but everybody calls me Rose Giannani, and I live at twenty-four oh five North Garden Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And what I was saying, what I, I'm here just like everybody else, you know? We saw how bad this month had been, but actually, it's been like since June that my water bill was like, it was okay, I could live with it, because I am a disabled widow, old lady. And in June, everything was okay, you know? And in July, my bill went to ninety-four dollars, and then in August, it went to a hundred and seven. And then now in September, it went to a hundred and ninety-seven, ninety-two and never seven. And for a person, maybe some people could say, "That's nothing compared to what I have to pay." But when you live with disability, you have to know how much you are able to have to pay your bill. And that's where I'm at. I just wish, I don't know a lot of, a lot of things, you know? I don't know about the thousands and the millions and all these things, but I do know if I can afford to pay my bills or not. And I would just, would love to, you take the consideration that you would be able to help me and others, you know, and everybody else, so that we were able to, like this month, I had to borrow money to pay my water. I don't want that to be every month. So if something could be done, I would really appreciate it. And I'm sorry that I'm such a baby, but that's just the way I feel, and I really, really appreciate all of you, and I know that you work hard. And I know that this summer, it's been so hot, we've had, used extra water, you know? So anyway, I just want for things to work out. I know we're not perfect, and you all need the time to do what you have to do so you can help us, so we all can work together. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, we have Jesus Molina, and then Kimberly Brooks, are they here? Ms. Brooks?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Kimberly Brooks, and I'm the property manager of Villa Mobile Home Park that's on four-ten East Twenty-third Street. And I'm here representing all our seniors that were in the park. And we've heard big numbers here today, how much the water bill has affected everybody. We have a water bill that's been going on for years, usually between twenty-one hundred dollars and twenty-nine hundred dollars tops, with our park having eighty-two units. Now, not all of those are filled, and sometimes people on vacation or in the hospital, so that can vary a little bit. Our bill came in at nine thousand dollars. Somehow that has to roll downhill and go to these homeowners, and most of these folks, it is a senior park, are on a fixed income, and I'm sure a lot of people here are that way as well. But how do you look someone in the eye and tell them, "Okay, we raised your bill twenty dollars because we were in anticipation of a rate increase. Now we're gonna have to raise it another eighty to a hundred," and they don't have the money? And how do you take it from one person and not another? We really need your help when you're thinking of how you're going to fix this problem. I'm also speaking, next is Julie Woltmeyer. She was unable to come. She has a disabled husband. And her park is next door, and she has forty-three units. Her bill increased as much as ours did, and we need your help. We don't want to see these people homeless. Some of them have lived here their whole life, and they love Roswell. But when you take into consideration what you're gonna do to fix it, think of the moms, the grandparents, the great-grandparents that are still alive and thriving and barely getting by and having to raise their rent when they can't afford it. So we ask, please, consider all of these things that you're hearing from all the people and take that into consideration when we make those changes. We've got to help the city. We understand that. Rates got to go up, but not like that. Nine thousand dollars is insane. So we ask for your help. And we have a rock park. There's no grass, so it's not outside watering. So maybe that'll help you think of it, too. There has got to be something wrong, like you said, with the meters. So please consider that and do your very best for us. We'll try to do our very best to be patient. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I have Richard Hess and then Angelina, or Angela Rodriguez? Is that right? Okay. And then it looks like Jose Luis Navarez.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're calling my name finally. My name's Richard Hess. I live at seven zero six North Wyoming, and I've lived there for thirty years, or almost thirty years. We bought that house in nineteen ninety-seven. This month, I was expecting a hire bill, and this is the highest month of the year because it's the hottest. I've got two lots, and I have a lot of water to keep the grass looking halfway decent, keep my trees growing. I got four pecan trees. Well, this water bill just wiped out my pecan profit for this year. I've got to shut my water off. I shut everything off except for my little garden that I'm growing vegetables. My bill went up from an average for the past five years from three hundred and twenty dollars to seven hundred and nine. That's what I just paid. And I went down and threw a fit down at the water department and talked to Ernest there. He's dealt with me before when I had problems, that y'all have a third party that sends out the bills, and they never were getting to me. I was missing every other bill, and at that time, my wife had dementia, and she would forget to pay it. And so I've had my water shut off over the past twenty years several times. But I check my meter. I monitor it. I take pictures of the meter about every three days. I don't have any water leaks. I've replaced my lines. So I know what it is. is to replace lines that look like that. Mine were a little bit smaller, since they were only about three-quarters of an inch, but I have a two-inch meter, a two-inch line coming in, and I'm paying, my bill just went up on that to fifty-five dollars from forty-five, just for the privilege of having water in my house. Not for the right, the privilege being hooked up to the city water meter. You know, I, I think that's, you know, I don't mind paying for the privilege being, but not, not when you increase everything this much. This is a ripoff. And I know that probably half of you don't, don't even know what it's all about, and you're trying, scrambling here, trying to fix it. I support with this man right here, Edward, I can't, however, how the brand, I like the way you speak, sir. And I support the three dollar and fifty cent, you know, per thousand gallons, because I calculated it up. And that would, that would bring my bill this month that I just paid down to four seventy-seven. That could be in my budget. This seven hundred dollars was not in my budget. Guess what? I'm a typical American, I have to cut something back. You guys are typical Americans, you should be cutting something back, and that's what we hired you for. Find the funds. That's my time? I don't, I didn't turn my clock on, but that's what we hired you for. And I think I speak for just about everybody in the city. You know, you guys are here to serve us, to take care of this city. And fortunately, I don't know of anybody on the council now that is self-imposed and, you know, taking care of himself. I think you all are trying. But please, pass this change, because it will bring it back into my budget. Maybe not some of the other people that have spoke, and I feel sorry for them, and maybe I can help them out some way, shape, or form, or maybe you can. But thank you for giving me your time and listening. A lot of people have said a lot more things than I have, but I just had to get that across. We hired you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Angelia Rodriguez, and then Jose Luis Navarez, I believe?
Hello, Mayor, hello, Council. My name is Angelica Rodriguez, I live at twelve oh one east first. Um, my concern is, um, before the pockets of everybody getting milked, um, I did notice that before this water issue that took place, and I don't think very much people are familiar with it, you all had target the meters that were in properties. These properties that were just fields that have absolutely nothing in them, because, um, before this issue came with the water, I was dealing with being charged sixty dollars just for having a meter in a vacant lot. Um, do y'all know, are y'all familiar with that? Did y'all know that? Yeah, so anyways, how that got fixed, I ended up going to the Water Department, I told them, how am I getting charged sixty dollars for a property that's across from my house that I own? Sixty dollars for a meter that is just a vacant lot, absolutely has no access for water but the water beater. I was told that the reason for that charge is going to be charged for everybody else who owns a lot, um, that has a meter on it, we're gonna get charged sixty dollars because of, because the homeless were getting into it. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that. But anyways, I thought I'd bring that up, and not only that, you know, I do see that, you know, the pockets are being milked out of everybody. Not only them, it's even affecting the dairies, because I've heard that there are dairies that are wanting to close down because they do use a lot of water, and they don't use well water. You know, I see the, I see the lady, she, that, that, that was here that was tearing up, she is somebody's mother, she is somebody's grandma. It is affecting her. If she cries, she's crying because it's affecting her. It may not be affecting you all, and I know that you all got to do what y'all got to do, and I know that this isn't gonna go away, it has to get fixed. But I pray and I ask that whatever's being done in the darkness will be exposed in the light. And if there is any crookedness, that it will be exposed, and that you all that are doing your job and doing it right to make Roswell beautiful, because Roswell is beautiful, but at the same time, where there is lack of water, where we're gonna have to limit ourselves, it's gonna look desolate, desolated and dry. It's gonna look dry. I, on my block, it's already started to look dry. I love using my water, I love for my place to look nice, I love for it to look like there's life in it. But when we start pulling life out of Roswell, even out of every individual that's here, it's gonna be totally different. So, I pray and I ask in the mighty name of Jesus that you all just don't see it from what y'all gotta do, because I know y'all got a lot of homework, and this happened, and it has to be addressed. Because I see this, when I see this, I see this as the veins running through Roswell. It has to be addressed, it can't stay like that, it has to be done. So, I pray and I ask that y'all will have the wisdom and the knowledge to get this done, and not only that, to do what needs to be do, done also for the citizens of Roswell. Because without the citizens that are out here, what would become of Roswell? And I do know that we also have a lot of those smoke shops, um, how much taxes come from that to get put back into Roswell? Because I know Colorado banks it. That's one of my questions. But that's all I have to say. I bless you all, I'm definitely praying for you, I love you all.
Thank you. On, the smoke shops, they don't bring much in, uh, there's some new stuff, they don't bring much in, and-
Oh, I know they do.
On, on the vacant lots, when they put, when they had the meter company come in, they put anywhere there was a meter before, even if there was non-use, and if the meter was there before, they put another meter in it. And that's what happened when all of a sudden it came and they changed, the other council changed it, and they, those people got paid for every meter they put in, and anybody who was, whenever they close a meter or take one out, and the ordinance that they put in, they charge you, uh, for that meter every month, no matter what. In the past, if you weren't using any water, you could, you didn't necessarily have to pay it. But because the water, when they put a new meter in, then that went back on the list, and every, they charged everybody to do it, was the way I understood that happened on the vacant lots.
Yeah, on the vacant lot, it didn't happen that way. Um, the only way for me to be able to waive that price, where I wouldn't have to pay sixty dollars every month for a, a meter just being in my lot, is I had to, um, have, call them and get somebody to pull out a certain thing out of the meter so that I wouldn't be charged every month. But for every lot that is out there that does have a meter, and if they didn't have that done, they get charged sixty dollars every month for just having a meter there because, um, the homeless are getting into it, is what I was told. It is an old meter, so I didn't know if y'all were aware of that, or if anybody else was aware of that. Because not very much people were aware of that. I'm only aware because they hit me with the bill, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh-huh, thank you.
And we had Jose Luis, uh, Vasquez, okay, not here. Uh, looks like Francisco Ahala, A-J-A-L-A. No, okay, then we have a few more on the backlist. We had Bruce Andler, A-N-D-L-E-R, maybe, not here. We have Modesto Corona, Carmona, Modesto Corona, no. Rico Nahara, Nahar, no. Bill Bon, Bondra, okay.
My name is Bill Bondra, I live at seven oh five West Eleventh Street. And the first thing is, I really find it hard to believe that you, people didn't realize that fifty percent plus increases would cause an uproar like this. But anyway, uh, I've been, I've been Roswell for twenty-seven years, so I can, I'm an ex-Pennsylvania, now I'm a Roswell guy. My father died in his house on, on, uh, Swinging Spear. My mother died at what used to be the hospital down there at the corner of South and Southeast Main. I want to die in my house on Eleventh Street. I don't want to be driven out of my house by excessive utility bill. And, uh, my utility bill went up over fifty percent in one month. And that's, that's, uh, that's too much, that's too much of an increase in utility bill. And I would like to propose, you mentioned thirty percent, I would like to propose a fifteen percent cap on increases, but only for veterans, homeowners over the age of seventy-five, a fifteen percent yearly cap on the water bill. And incidentally, we used to get trash collection on Eleventh Street twice a month, now it's only once a month, usually on Monday or Tuesday morning, usually Monday morning. Used to be twice a month, now it's only once a month. And these, these bills, these estimated bills, you have to try and do your best to actually bill people for what they use, not what you think they're gonna use. I don't know what that would cost, but, you know, if you've got forty years, thirty years, forty years, fifty years to collect, you can't fix it in one or two years, because, uh, it's gonna drive so many people out of here, they're gonna leave Roswell, and there's gonna be lots, lots of empty houses with for-sale signs on them and no buyers. And you, you, you can't go too far with the increases, because you go too far, it's gonna, it's gonna have a counter effect, it's gonna be like that, what do they call it in economics? Diminishing marginal utility, where you're spending way more to fix an old beat-up car than it's worth. It just ain't worth it anymore. So, if you, if you, many people can't live here anymore because they can't afford you the bills, then, uh, it's gonna drive the community way down. I, I was down in Las Cruces, and Las Cruces has grown like wildfire. We are not growing at all here. We've got many, you know, we, for years, we were trying to get to fifty thousand. And then, you know, after the Air Force Base closed, it took ten years for them to recover and pushing this, Roswell is a great place to retire. That's why my parents came here, they thought it was a great place to retire. I guess it was then in the seventies, but now it's, uh, you, you can only go so far with the increases. Otherwise, you're, you're, you're doing not what you expected to do and what you wanted to do. I can't see my time, because without my glasses, I can't see that, I can't read that thing without my glasses. But, uh-
Your time is up.
Okay, you can only go so far with the increases.
Thank you, sir. And we have, uh, G.A. Rotman? Okay.
My name is G.A. Rotman, I live at twenty-three Cedar Drive. I got three questions. Number one is, we're over here. Your access fees doubled. Why? I was paying eleven dollars a month access fee for my water, and it's now twenty-seven dollars. My meter reading is twenty-five fifty, and my sanitation is twenty-four thirty-six. I understand the water rates going up, not the access fees. We paid for the access, we paid for the meter, we paid to tap into the sewer. You didn't pay to tap into the sewer, we did. I'm a retired plumber. These access fees are way out of line. Now, that's the one question I have. The other one is, who's gonna do the work on repairing the water lines? Is it gonna be our people in the city of Roswell, or are you gonna hire an outside contractor that's gonna stiff us? I understand it's a million, around a million five hundred for three-quarters of a mile. How much of that is the contractor, and what contractor? Don't we have people here that can run a backhoe? Don't we have people here that are, work for the Water Department that can do these lines? PVC is not that expensive, well, it's not that expensive, but it's not that heavy. These cast iron lines, I've worked with them, I know how they are. But we do not need to bring in an outside contractor. We've got contractors that live here that could help us with this work. Now, who've we got lined up to do the work? Have we got somebody lined up?
No, sir, we don't.
Are we gonna get an outside contractor? I, I need to know now, are we gonna get an outside contractor to do this work?
Anything we do will be done through bidding.
Bids. Sealed bids?
Yes, sir.
And are we gonna know who bid on what?
Yes, sir.
We can't have our own people do it. Why can't we hire unmoored people to work in the Water Department to do this work and stiff the contractor?
Well, it's, uh-
I've done this for over fifty years here in Roswell. Well, that's something that we need to take up with these other people. We need to hire people that can do the work.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Corn wanted to respond to you. Mr. Corn?
When you're, when you're dealing with, with water, you have to be certified for certain sized pipe.
I know that.
We have people that work in our department, I understand, up to eight inch. This is a whole lot bigger than eight inch.
Then get them certified. We can, we can afford to pay them to go get certified, it's not that expensive. I got certified.
No, I know.
And I know you.
I, I know, but I just, the, you know, the pipe itself, or eight inch, let me tell you-
I know, I know what eight inches, I know what twelve inches. You've gotta be certified to put it together.
Eight inch PVC pipe, twenty feet long. I'm told used to cost us two hundred bucks. During the big price increase, it got up to a thousand dollars a stick. Went from two hundred to a thousand dollars a twenty-foot stick. And now, I understand that the markets readjusted. What happened was, the places that made it all broke down at the same time, so it raised the price up. It's now stabilized, as I understand it, because I'm not the guy that's buying it, uh, it between, somewhere between four and five hundred dollars, which is still twice what we used to pay for it at two hundred.
All right, but we gave them money years ago, we had, like you said, it was in twenty, uh, thirteen was the last rate increase. We had given them money to do this infrastructure for five raises, and it was never touched. I know it's not you guys didn't do it, but somebody needs to look back and find out where that money went, who absconded with it, and do something about it.
Well, I, I tried to explain that. If it, if it's in one of the enterprise funds, it's restricted money, so those dollar bills are yellow, orange, whatever color you wanna make them. Then, then when it goes into the general fund, they go back green and lose track.
Then we need to stop putting our water money in the general fund.
I, I absolutely agree.
We need to do something and get it separated out, so that the water money does not go in the general fund and get used someplace else.
We're working on that.
We're working on that very hard.
Well, we need to do it faster.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last one I have, is, if there's two here, Yvonne, Yvonne? Is there Yvonne here? S-C-E-R-A-D-A-T-O? Okay, she's not here. Is there anyone else? Oh, you're here? Okay.
Yvonne Squerado, I live at one oh three Tierra Berinda. Um, I attended the meeting on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, where the increase was proposed to the City Council. During the break of that meeting, the gentleman presenting the increase was laughing with another gentleman, and I heard him say, if I get away with this increase, I will need to wear a bulletproof vest in this town. This is a city with a poverty rate of twenty to twenty-three percent, which is double that, um, of the- of the national average, and a community that has free school lunches for all kids. The citizens cannot afford these increases. And as we've discussed, to add insult to injury, they implemented this increase during a summer with a hundred and ten degree days and no rain. Then they changed the format of the bill to confuse people and make it harder to compare old rates to new. At the meeting I attended, they also made the point that businesses in the city don't pay enough, and that the rate increase would go up to get them to pay up. If the businesses pay up, our prices go up, or they go out of business. The result is going to be citizens paying crazy water bills and even higher prices at the store than we've already had. Another consequence is how bad this city is going to look when citizens can no longer afford to maintain their lawns. My current bill calculated at old rates would have been a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The proposal that came out today would make that bill two hundred and seventy-four, and currently it's three hundred and fifty-four, which is an eighty percent increase. We were told millions of dollars were needed to replace outdated pipes throughout the city, but how many miles can actually physically even be prepared, repaired per year? We just witnessed the three-year closure of Atkinson, just between College and Second Street. If every household paid an extra ten dollars per month, that would be two million dollars, and that would repair two and a half miles of road based on your numbers. So you certainly don't need a hundred and sixty-five dollars just from me this month. And I know many people's bills increased much more than mine. As of right now, this month's bill is straight-up robbery of this community. We've all heard of the mismanaged money, we're supposed to learn from history, and even if I'm supposed to trust you guys, how can I trust future councils?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Council Lady Moore.
Now, I'm a councilperson, and I'm just like y'all, I brought my bills too. Y'all, y'all not the only one that got bills, and I've been gone for two and a half months, and my bill tripled also. So it's understandable to be upset. Am I upset? Yes. But the question for me is, and I guess, and I think Ms. Sosa asked a question about, is there going to be help paying the current bills? I asked a question about that also, and was, you know, I think they mentioned about we couldn't help fund, what was it called, anti-donation or something like that, that we couldn't help, and that these bills had to be paid a couple of months. What's going to happen to that person that had the fifty-nine hundred dollar, and this is a question to the council and to America, what's going to happen to that person that had that fifty-nine hundred bill, or the young, the, the mother that can't pay her one ninety-seven or whatever? Just be honest, you, even though your bill went up, some people can afford it, but some people can't. And so, I want to ask, answer that, because when somebody asks that, how are we going to help the citizens? How do we think, we're already having budget issues and problems? How are we as a city going to be able to help these people, these hundreds of people that are in here today, and there's even twice that many outside of the city, I'm sure? How, Mr. Cole, maybe you can answer that. How are we going to be able to help those people that cannot afford to pay these bills, that don't want to water their yard, I don't water my yard already, and my bill's still tripling, and I was gone for two and a half months? So I understand the increase, and I understand the way it went up wasn't the way we planned, the way it was rolled out wasn't the way we planned, but planning, what fell into plan is planning to fail. And so I think what we had here is a failure, a failure to communicate. Did we get rid of the person that made that comment that that young lady made, that he needed, he didn't need a bulletproof vest, he had to run out of town? So there's, you know, there's a difference, you know what I mean? So I understand that we all have a problem, but what are we going to do? Now that we heard all these people's problems, and I, to my understanding, the poor, the poor people at the water, the people have been crying for weeks, they, they scared to go to work and so, all the threats and stuff that the people are doing to the people at the water company, they can't do anything about it, so y'all leave those people alone. But what can we do? You can't answer it, you don't, you don't work for the city, you can't answer that? You, you don't control the checkbook, you going to pay their bill? What's your, what's your, what's your question? I'm going to let you, go ahead. I'm allowed, go ahead.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
With the state's surplus of four point five billion dollars after expenditures of this year, they're sitting a lot of money, and the Army Corps of Engineers owes this area. My grandfather trained out here for the Korean War, he was deployed, he watched all of his people die. And our country owes this area. So the Army Corps of Engineers can get out here and do it, and they can do it quick, and they are certified.
We're not talking about the fixing, we know that has to be done, I get that. I'm not talking about the bills.
Excuse me, we're not going to have an argument, I mean, let's keep it going, okay?
Thank you. And I understand about the repairs and all that, but I'm asking, is there going to be a way for the people that cannot afford to pay their bills to continue to receive water, continue to live, continue to, is there going to be a way?
Councilor Moore, that's a great question. As you know, as you mentioned, we all got a water bill. I got a water bill as well. My mother called me today about her water bill. I've been fielding nothing but phone calls for weeks about the water bill, and to your point, with our water billing department, they have taken a beating. This is not their fault. We did, we did make a mistake, and we did trust a rate study that took about six months, eight months to build. And we had hearings, and we reviewed it as a team, as a group, and we were misled. I believe I was misled. I believe you believe you were misled. And here's my problem. I have a water bill issue. My mother's on a fixed social security income. She's single, she's on her own, she's got a water bill problem. And I don't have a solution that's legal, as you're asking for, I don't have that solution. But in the hearing period, we're going to hear from all of you and the team, and we can work through possible solutions, but I don't have an anti, I can't tell you that we can pay them back that, because we passed it in ordinance as law. Now, Mr. Itema may correct me there, but I don't believe there is that solution.
There is.
Councilor Moore, so the short answer, as far as retroactive forgiveness, would be impermissible under the state constitution?
Impermissible?
In, not permissible. The, the solution is how you build the future rates, and then the second component is that anybody who comes in who can't make their bill is entitled to a payment plan. So depending on how you build the rates out in the future, the payment plan would make them whole.
So that person that has a fifty-nine hundred dollar bill, I'm using a number, is going to be required, even if it was a meter mistake or whatever, I'm just using them, even if.
Oh, so yeah, Council, I can answer that. If it's a meter mistake, we refund, full stop.
Okay.
If it's, but if that's their actual usage for an actual billing period, they are obligated to pay.
Okay. And the refunding of the young lady that says she had already paid up, would she be able to be refunded if, if she had already paid her bill? Or she'd just get a credit, she'd get a credit?
Yeah, should we just get, we would just transfer a credit to whatever her account is now? She definitely lives in town still. That, it would go from her business to her residential, or we would, it's a little bit complicated on the accounting side to issue the check, but it is possible.
Not, okay, all right, so I, I just feel like we need to come up with something, because there's so many people that are going to be stuck like Chuck, because of a mistake that we made. So I just feel like we have to, as a city, to be, you know, we want our kids to be accountable, we need to be accountable for this mistake that we made with this billing. Now, I don't necessarily know what, there's no immediate answer, I know, and I know we're working through this, this hearing process and all that, and so we'll talk to this one more time, but I do understand, and we talked about having to get this resolution done, because we have, before the two weeks, we still, we still, there's, the longer we take, the more your bill, the next bill is going to be the same.